Meeting today, June 1st, happy summer's on its way. We've got a number of issues, but before we go into that, I'd like to make sure that the audience knows that this meeting is being held consistent with the state law that allows for virtual meetings. In addition to that, you can watch this virtual meeting, everyone in the community as well as the media, on the government's YouTube channel, on our city government channel, as well as Facebook Live. So, we have the strategic meeting once a month so that council can discuss issues in depth, and so we will have a very robust agenda tonight with several issues and topics for discussion. But before we do that, I would like to read a proclamation for today. And so I'll begin with this proclamation before we go to our agenda. Whereas our nation has passed a grim point in our history with 100,000 Americans having died from COVID-19, and whereas the rapid spread of the virus, the scope of its impact and its mitigation through social distancing, we have not been able to give, have not been given the time or space to mourn and lament and remember those whose lives have been taken by the virus. So whereas to meet this need, religious communities across faiths are acting in unity and in public spaces to pray for the healing of our nation. Now therefore, I, Vi Alexander Louse, Charlotte Mayor, proclaim June 1st as National Day of Mourning and Lament, and urge faith and community leaders and all our residents to join us on this day to pause, reflect, pray and mourn, and honor all of those who have lost, and to comfort those, all of those we have lost, and to comfort all of those that are left behind. Witness my seal for the City of Charlotte, Vi Alexander Louse. So this was an effort that was put together across our country, and many of our faith leaders and institutions have begun prayers and are beginning at noon today, and all this as being asked of all of us by midnight tonight. So with that, I hope everyone will take a moment and reflect on our losses in Charlotte, and the hopes that we will be able to end this COVID pandemic soon. So with that, I'm going to begin our first agenda item is the city manager's report. But let's begin with introductions of our city council, starting with our mayor pro temp.
Good, uh, June, let's see, happy June 1st, everyone. Julie Isel, Mayor Pro Temp, serving at large.
Happy Monday, Dimpala Ashmira, at large.
Good evening, everyone. James Mitchell, at large.
Braxton Winston, at large.
Happy Monday, Larkin Egleston, District 1.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Good evening, Victoria Watlington, District 3.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Newton, District 5.
Dark McCary, District 6.
Ed Driggs, District 7. Good evening.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we will begin our agenda with the city manager's report. As all of our community is aware, we've been going through a rather difficult time with the protests and, and sessions around the loss of the life of George Floyd in Minneapolis. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I wouldn't, I will start off tonight by indicating that the agenda has changed since the end of last week, because my report will be dedicated to the demonstrations of the past few days, and what we expect over the next few days. So we'll have Chief Putney leading that discussion. Before I turn it over to the chief, I would like to talk a little bit about what was on the agenda, and what the agenda will be for today. So previously, we had a discussion that was set aside for conventions, where we would have Tom Murray, as well as our staff, talk about our preparedness for that, and that will be moved to next Monday's meeting. And we had our municipal service district reports. I believe we've given those to you, but we will do that again. So we would have had Darlene and Michael provide you with updates about what's happening in those two municipal service districts, but we'll make sure we get those presentations to you, as well as quick summaries. So tonight, we will have, as a part of the update, an update for you, dealing with the recent demonstrations and those that will be occurring over the next few days, as well as the Charlotte Business Inclusion Policy Revisions. That was something that has been in a series of committees, and I think if I have this correct right now, Councilmember Mitchell, it's lastly discussed in the Business and Workforce Development Committee. So there's an update for you tonight, as well as we will follow through on updates for the two remaining task force reports. We'll lead off with housing, and then end up with the airport. So if there aren't any questions of me, mayor, or council, I would like to turn it over to Chief Putney.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Actually, as we said, we've changed a bit. You're going to hear the report from Deputy Chief Jennings, and then we'll open it up for any questions, and we'll both entertain any questions that you, as a, as a council, may have. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Jennings to give you the report, based on what has been transpiring.
You see? All right. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, start just by saying that I normally don't comment on other situations in other cities without making sure that I had the full story behind it. And this one is, is different for me. It's, it's one that I think the full story is there. There's nothing else to, that you can tell me or convince me from what I saw on the video, and I will let you know that it's disturbing, it's heartbreaking, it's something that really triggered me, and to also continue on with that, that in no way, shape, or form does that reflect what our expectations are of our department, of our officers. I've spoken with several officers, both retired, internal, both at the chief's level, officer level. I haven't met a single person that can, that has any type of justification for what we saw in Minneapolis. So I wanted to start by saying that, and to move on with some of the things that we've seen over the past three days, and with the uprisings that we've been facing, and the rioting that we've been facing within, on Beatty's Ford Road, as well as within the downtown area. We've made 70 arrests so far with, since the demonstrations began on Friday night. We've recovered 10 guns. That's, that's really disturbing to me, in the fact that 10 guns have been in possession by some of the rioters and protesters that we've seen out there, and that's what we've recovered, so there's no telling what we were not able to recover as well. Another concern with me, eight officers have been injured, some obviously more so than others, but eight, eight officers had to receive medical treatment, medical attention for some of the actions that we were involved in out there as well. Dozens of businesses and properties have been vandalized. Rioters have thrown rocks, bricks, bottles of water, Molotov cocktails. Officers have been assaulted by all of those items, by people who have participated in the rioting. Some threw firefighters. One thing that, that is also disturbing is, we had a protester fall through a grate downtown area in one, on one of the sidewalks, and as medic and firefighters attempted to treat and, and get that person out and rescue that person, they were also hit with rocks and, and debris from some of the people participating in the riot. So I'll just end by saying, before we answer any questions, that we always welcome, and we're perfectly capable of dealing with peaceful protests. When it's a crowd management issue, that's fine. When that protest turns into rioting, and assaults, and property damage, then we have to take action on the law enforcement side. So we're, we're gonna ensure the safety of anybody participating, ensure that they're able to do so, and exercise their First Amendment right to assemble, but at the same time, it's our responsibility to keep law and order as well. So I think at this point, we'll answer any questions.
Uh, Madam? Can you hear me? I, I have, can you hear me now?
I, I can, yes.
I feel like I've said that a lot. So I know that everyone on the council is very interested in having the opportunity to engage with both Chief Putney and Chief Jennings, so I thought we would start with the Mayor Pro Temp, and then the at-large, and then continue through. So I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Temp, Julie Isel, followed by Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Chief Jennings, this is the first opportunity we've had to have you before us as the incoming police, new police chief in the fall, so it's great to see you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
For your work. We, I, I have a question that really has come from a lot of constituents. We know there's a protest or a rally in Freedom Park tonight, and what we've seen with these lawful protests during the day is, you know, more commotion at night. A lot of people are asking if there is intel with you all that protesters are going to go into neighborhoods. We're hearing this in other cities as well, and if so, how is CNPD prepared for that?
Yeah, thank you. It, it's, it is very difficult. There is intel that we do look at as far as when they go into neighborhoods, residential areas, it's concerning, because you're disrupting the, the livelihood of people who live in those areas. But we are prepared with, we, you know, we're fortunate to have staffing that we can help control those crowds, as long as they're lawful, and staying on the sidewalks, and not disturbing people's private property. We have the capabilities of doing that, and to make sure that we keep that, keep order in place as they do. So we wanna, we, we wanna make sure that they do have the right to, to assemble, and to have the ability to, to be heard, but at this point, we not, don't have anything in particular as far as a neighborhood is concerned. We do have some locations they want to meet that are in, that are, that's pretty close to residential areas, but not as far as targeting any neighborhoods at this point. But if they do so, we'll be prepared for that.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me echo Mayor Pro Temp comments. Mr. Jennings, looking forward to your leadership when you become my new chief. One question, during this tough time, our small businesses already experiencing from COVID-19, and during some of the riot, they've been impacted again. Is there a strategy to make sure our small businesses, you know, are not attacked during some of these violent protests? I, I think that Councilman Mitchell, that goes along with the entire plan, not just the small businesses, but, you know, again, like I mentioned, we're, we're going to protect life and property, and that includes the small businesses, and, you know, we're gonna do the best we can. There's, we, we have a really good force. I'm really proud of the officers and what they've been able to accomplish over the last three days. They're exhausted, but they know what the mission is, they know what, they know what our purpose is, and they, they've responded well, so they're gonna continue to do that. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Jennings, thank you for an update, and appreciate your leadership and our, our CNPD, CNPD's work here. We have gotten many emails about de-escalation. Could you please share what CNPD is doing to de-escalate in this situation?
Yeah, certainly. We, we are always trying to communicate with people involved in assembly. We have a constructive conversation team that we, we deliberately put out to have those conversations, and to make sure that we're all on the same page out there. So once we start getting assaulted, and once we start, you know, de-escalation, we've said it 100 times, that it goes both ways. We have to be able to communicate and have those conversations, and if one party's not willing to do that, then our efforts are much tougher, and often fail. And we had some situations that, that we reached out and tried to do so, but escalation on the part of officers being assaulted is, at that point, that we have to be responsive for that, and make sure that our officers are safe.
So, Chief Jennings, I, I'm with you, the de-escalation goes both ways, and assaulting anyone, a police officer, is not okay, where we have eight officers injured. But what are some of these techniques that were used to de-escalate on Friday and Saturday, or just over the weekend?
What are some of the techniques? Is that what you're asking? Okay. Well, like I mentioned before, you know, we, we get out and we try to talk with them. We try to meet with them. We'll, we'll meet with them early. I've had conversations with many of the people who have tried to, who have gone out to lead. Their intentions are, are, are great. I mean, they, they don't, a lot of the people who are leading these demonstrations have no intentions on them to go to the point of rioting, and they get out of hand, and you see people in the crowd. I, I'm especially flattered and very humbled by the fact of, you've seen crowds gather around police vehicles, and you see people calming them, and, and, you know, telling the crowd to calm down, leave the officers alone, and not to, not to damage their vehicles and damage the property. To me, that says that a lot of our outreach and things that we've done, leading up to this point of work, because we do have ambassadors out there that are trying to make sure that these, that this doesn't turn into the things that we've seen over the last three days.
Thank you, Chief. To follow up question, I know there were many folks out there, and we have seen, well, at least I have gotten some emails where folks have mentioned they were out there trying to, trying to build peaceful relationship between police and protesters, and they were arrested. What do you have to say to those folks?
Well, let me, let me first kind of educate on that, because we certainly appreciate anybody who's trying to keep things calm, and to, and to keep everything lawful. However, despite those efforts, you still have people who are participating, who want to assault and damage property, and that's something that we can't tolerate as an agency. Once that starts, and once we give orders to disperse, those people that are attempting to help, they need to, at that point, leave and get out of the way, because we're getting ready to stop the situation, to protect our officers, to protect property, and that's a sign, when we give those dispersal orders, that means everyone, even the ones who are out trying to keep matters calm. And it's unfortunate, but it, that's, that does happen, and, but those dispersal orders are not meant for just the people throwing rocks, it's meant for everyone in front of the line.
Got it. So I think there seems to be the communication gap, where when it comes to dispersment order, that is meant for everyone. Also, other question I have is, what are some of the steps that we are taking to don't see what we are seeing across the nation, especially in Minnesota, in LA? What are, what is the plan that we have in place, or what are some of the changes that we are making to our existing plan to protect all our residents?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure if you're referring to the, to policy or anything, but I, what I can tell you is, like I mentioned, this, this absolutely in no way has what we expect from our officers. We, we don't teach any tactics that restrict airways, and, and to, as far as CNPD's policy is concerned, if you use a chokehold, or if you restrict someone's airway, that's deadly force at that point. And unless you have justification to use deadly force, then, then you should not be restricting someone's airway. So I think that when you talk about what are some things that we're looking at, I think we, we made a huge changeover to our response to resistance just recently. I think everyone is aware of that, and that was a pretty significant change that included many stakeholders, and internally, externally, and I think we got to a good place. But I will tell you this, too, that we're, we're always reviewing our policies and reviewing things that we need to change. We've even discussed with this incident, we see something happen somewhere else in the country, we're gonna see how we can apply that to our policies and continue to get better. That's, that's, that's what we have to do within our agency.
Thank you, Chief Jennings. I know you have had community conversations over the weekend, along with your staff. Are there any specific policy items that have come from those conversations that a council ought to look at?
From this weekend? No, not at this point. I mean, we're, we're still very early. We're, you know, we're, we're going on very little sleep, and it's Monday, and so we're, you know, we're gonna put everything together, we're, we're having those discussions, and that's, that is, that, those are things that we're gonna look at, and can, like I said, continue to get better as an agency.
Thank you, Chief Jennings, and certainly appreciate your leadership, and also Chief Putney, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate. I know we are in good hands with you all.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Yes. At what point in time do we change tactics from de-escalation to our escalation of force and violence?
Well, we, we're responsive to what is put before us. If, if we're being assaulted, rocks are thrown, then we have to be responsive to that, and we have to be able to keep the order out in the streets, and that's, that's pretty much my answer for that one.
I, I, I don't think you answered my question. When do we change from tactics from de-escalation to escalation? So are you saying if rocks start being thrown, we will no longer de-escalate, we will only escalate use of force?
Well, you're, you're talking about us escalating as, as an agency. We're responsive to what's being done to us, and we're responsive to keeping the order and keeping the peace within, within the city. So once damaged, property is damaged, once officers are assaulted, that's illegal activity, and that's what we have to be responsive to. So if you want to call that escalation on our part, that's, that's, that's your opinion on that, but I will tell you that the escalation starts when it's done by the people who are out protesting.
So standing in the middle of the street is illegal, correct? So illegal is a very subjective application of force, isn't, is there not?
No, standing in the middle of the street is not legal during a riot when you're given a, an order to disperse. An order is exactly that. We're, we're there to keep the peace, we're gonna disperse when we need, deem necessary for the safety, not just of our officers, but to, of the people that are protesting. So when we give the dispersal order, everyone must comply, and, or we take action as a police department.
Do individuals commit acts that are suspected of crimes?
Certainly they do.
So if, why are we, why are we not targeting those individuals that are suspected of committing crimes, and why are we making blanket decisions for entire groups of people that are not suspected of committing crimes?
Well, I think that's your opinion. I think we are targeting the individuals suspected of crime. If, if we're not, if we're trying to keep the order and keep the peace as an agency, and people aren't complying with that, then they have to face the consequences of that, because that's, that's what our mission is, and that's what our goal is, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep the peace out there. So whether that's throwing rocks, blocking the interstate, we, we give as much as we can, but at some point, our job is to keep order out in the city.
On Friday night on Beatty's Ford Road, the commanding officer gave a command to the police out there to drive the people up Beatty's Ford Road from in front of Metro Division to La Salle Street. Why was that order given to drive them towards La Salle Street? Is it our policy to drive groups of protesters towards vulnerable business fronts?
You know what? I'm, I'm not gonna get into specifics of tactics that we dealt with out there. What I will tell you is that whenever we give dispersals, we do have to give an out. You can't tell a crowd to disperse without having a way to, a way to get, get out. And if that's the case, the tactics involve managers to make sure that people have a way to get, get out of the situation.
So I understand, I understand tactics. Tactics are different than orders. I did not ask about tactics. I would ask, why was that order given to drive them to La Salle Street?
I disagree with you. A tactic in order is a tactic. Whatever we order is part of the tactic that we have to be able to control the crowd out there. So that's, I've been doing this for 28 years, and when we start facing situations to where we have to control the, control things for the safety of people, then that's what we're gonna do. And, and if that order is part of the tactic, that we need to make sure that we keep the peace out there.
Do you, do you think it is wise, in your 28 years of experience, to drive an excited group of protesters towards vulnerable business fronts when they were not threatening them in the first place?
I think it's wise to look at all the options of what we have out there, and if that's the option that we took, then I think our officers, our officers did a great job out there. Our officers were out for several hours in Our officers were out for several hours uh, in, in the heat, uh, and dealing with hostile crowds. Uh, I commend them for what they did. And uh, I think that we had great leadership and command out there and, and we were able to keep things uh, as, as peaceful as we possibly could. Uh, I think you look at other cities that have dealt with the same thing, uh, the training and the, the resources that we have in Charlotte. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trade that for any other agency in the country.
Uh, have chemical weapons uh, ever uh, this weekend been responsible? Um, or ever really, uh, have they ever been responsible for the prevention of violence and dis- or destruction?
Absolutely they have. If, 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 look, if our officers are getting pelted with rocks, bricks, bottles, I have eight officers injured. Uh, if it, if it means that we have to use chemical munitions to quell that and to protect our officers, we're going to do that. Uh, I'm not going to sit and let our officers get injured and assaulted uh, and, and just sit and take it. We're gonna, we're gonna be responsive to that and that's what we did.
What could I, what could I have done differently to not get arrested?
You could have left. When the dispersal order was given, you could have walked away. I'm not going to try your case here, talking to you on the, uh, at this meeting. But the bottom line is that the people that left, they didn't not get arrested. Uh, you stayed there, you remained, uh, and you were part of the line as officers pushed through. Uh, and, and that's what happened. Uh, so uh, if you want to talk further offline about that, I'll be happy to do it, but uh, I think you, I think you're well aware of the situation that happened.
I would like to do that. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we'll um, start with District Seven, Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief Jennings, welcome. I look forward to being able to spend some time with you in person and get better acquainted. Uh, and appreciate your service under these difficult circumstances. Uh, one question I had is all of this is taking place amid the virus threat. And so, uh, are you able to do anything to safeguard your officers from the virus in a crowd situation like this? Where social distancing is not being maintained and a lot of people aren't wearing masks?
Yeah, you know, if, if you can look at the, uh, some of the incidents out there, officers wore their uh, gas mask for a majority of the time that they were out. Uh, it's now, one thing that we can't do is have a, an N ninety-five or a cotton mask on and then get a seal for a gas mask. That's just not possible. Uh, so there are some things that we have to, we have to be prepared for. But once that gas mask goes on, that's probably the, one of the top levels of protection that we can have uh, with our officers, but um, that's, that's about what we can do. Uh, we realize that uh, some of the risks that are out there when we start talking about COVID nineteen. Uh, and it's also a risk to the thousands of people that are out as well that are protesting and demonstrate, demonstrating uh, without any type of uh, uh, personal protective equipment, so.
So uh, I know this situation isn't over yet, but I did want to take this opportunity to thank your officers for their dedication and professionalism and restraint under these circumstances. Uh, it's a very difficult situation that they're in and everything I saw uh, suggested to me that their top priority was to keep things calm and to keep people safe in the face of various challenges. And I would like to mention too, uh, I think part of the reason it hasn't been worse here compared to other cities is uh, the efforts that have been made and Chief Putney, you're on the call. I want to specifically recognize you here. The community outreach, the training of the officers. I mean, we have spent a lot of time preparing for situations like this after the experience that we had. And I think we're seeing some dividends. I'd like to think so. So I hope that we can conclude this safely and in the same spirit that it has been handled so far. And once again, Chief Jennings, uh, welcome to your new job and uh, look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Eggleston?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. My questions have been answered. I'll call Chief Jennings as well.
Hello.
There. Um, but did want to uh, take this as an opportunity to thank the community leaders around the city who have helped to organize events that have honored the loss of life in Minneapolis uh, for George Floyd and who have helped to de-escalate situations and make sure that people are voicing their frustration and voicing their anger for the wrong that was uh, that, that occurred. And making sure that, that we're working towards trying to improve those situations and avoid those outcomes in the future. And I think there's been a lot of that going on. Obviously, most of the attention is paid to folks who are not there with that objective. Uh, and the folks who are, are there to be destructive instead of constructive. Um, but there's been a lot of constructive conversations that have happened over the last three days. Uh, largely thanks to um, community leaders and activists and faith leaders in our community. And so while uh, a lot of, a lot of time and, and thought will be put towards um, the negatives of the last three days, I just wanted to shine a light on some of the positives. So thank you to all those folks and I hope that that work will continue.
That, that's very much appreciated. Thanks for that.
Mr. Bakari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, Chiefs, both of you, thank you all so much. Appreciate everything you're doing and going through. Uh, Chief Jennings, welcome to your uh, new role here. Uh, trial by uh, fire is the only way, I guess it, it happens. Um, I, I, I do also want to join my colleague, Councilman Eggleston, and say thank you to the community leaders, the folks who have been out there passionately protesting um, and doing so in an organized, you know, manner, peaceful manner with leadership, um, to make a very important point. Also want to thank the officers. Right now, everyone, if you don't know, our officers have been called back uh, uh, all back on duty. If they were at the beach, if they were on their vacation, if they were having a weekend with their family, they're back. And they're doing twelve hours on, twelve hours off right now. Uh, and they're, you know, thank you obviously to them, but also let's remember their, their spouses and families and significant others that literally I see a dozen Facebook posts a day saying wishing our husband or wife uh, safe uh, journeys today and hope they make it back to us. So thank you for all of that. Um, I just want to make a comment and then ask one question. Uh, I think the vast majority of, of all charlatans would agree with two truths right now. One, what we saw in Minneapolis, where, where an officer's knee on the neck led to George Floyd losing his life, that is unacceptable. And I think the second thing is rioting, looting, damaging uh, ten thousand small businesses that are currently reeling right now in the environment they're trying to come back online in. A hospitality and tourism industry that is reeling and uh, is once again um, reeling again for other reasons. Um, those are two things that just can't happen. And there has to be some kind of ground in between those two uh, that we can exist and have the tough conversations and make the tough points we need to. So we have a lot of hard work still to do. Clearly, we've made a lot of progress since twenty sixteen. We're seeing some of that play out right now, but we still have work to do. Um, but I think one thing that's clear to me is there are outside forces at play here. And we need our community leaders to unite right now and show that this is an inclusive and welcoming city. That tagline that we've been using for years now, this is where we need everyone to show, we can have valid disagreements. We can protest things that are very important and conversations that need to be had. But we need to make sure outside forces don't cause damage and dismay uh, that we've started to already see and have them hijack what our local activists and protesters are doing uh, right now. So with that being said, my call to action would be we can't do this without our community leaders, from the activists to the uh, clergy and the faith community to the business community. Um, but I might ask you with my question, uh, Chiefs, what is your call to action for this community right now on Monday? When this is not over yet, we are still triaging and at ground zero.
Well, my call to action is to step up. Um, you, you mentioned it, that uh, we can't do it by ourselves as a, as a law enforcement agency and we uh, we're frustrated not just at what we're seeing uh, take place in Charlotte. We're frustrated at what took place in Minneapolis because we realize that although that happened in another state, uh, it's, it affects us and you know, very few jobs, something can happen all the way across the country or no matter where it happens in your profession and you're broad stroke as uh, as evil or a villain. Uh, and it, it's frustrating for the officers, especially the ones who are out there doing good work every day, uh, that are out there trying to um, trying to work with the community and, and do better things. And in one incident like this, uh, they, they're vilified. Uh, and, and that, that's something that this profession it, it, it makes it very difficult to uh, to our officers who are out there on the front lines every day. And, and nobody's condoning, uh, nobody would ever condone any mistreatment or uh, disrespect that an officer gives a citizen. Uh, because that makes it more difficult to, to do your job the next time uh, an officer encounters that individual. So uh, so what I would say to the community is, uh, one, to, to, to step up and uh, educate yourself on what we do and who we are. Uh, and to help spread that word because uh, when someone is giving mis- misinformation about what we do as a profession, uh, then uh, if you have the knowledge and the education about who we are and what we do, then you can help uh, help clear that up with that individual.
Thank you, Chief Jennings and Chief Putney.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
So I also want to welcome the new chief and commend the police officers. They are good police officers and thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you to the community leaders and thank you to Councilmember Winston for being brave and courageous on the front line because of people like you being on the front line and many of our faces of color are able to be at the table today. Including uh, the mayor, council, city manager, and police chiefs and the managers that are on the call. So thank you for being out there on the front line and thank you to all of the peaceful and law- lawful protesters. I do have some questions. Um, are police officers in riot gear able to be notified, um, identified in their riot gear?
By the public?
Yes.
So yeah, absolutely they are. They, the riot gear stands out, yes.
I don't mean that, I'm sorry, as their badge number or their names or anything?
Oh, yes. Yes, the name tags, we do. Uh, they do have their name tags on their um, uh, on the back and as well as on there, should be on the shoulder as well.
Okay, on the shoulder, okay. Um, when, when an arrest is made during the um, protest slash riots, are there specific orders to move in on specific individuals? Um, how is that decision made um, on who gets arrested?
You referring to the, if we have a uh, officers in riot gear, uh, how that arrest is done? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, because out of the thousands of people that um, were out there over the past few days and there's seventy arrests. Is it, is it a coordinated action when a person is arrested?
Yeah, there are often times that it is. Uh, now, there are different, other times where you know, our officers are trained that we have arrest teams that will go after a specific individual and agitator. Uh, we also have other uh, situations to where if a line is moving, if officers are clearing a line and someone's not moving and, and uh, uh, complying with the dispersal order, uh, then there's also that officers have the ability to pull them in and make the arrest as well. So there are a couple of different ways to do it. Uh, we also have uh, uh, different units such as our bike patrols and um, you know, uh, some of our other units that can make arrests as well.
Okay. Um, specifically with Councilmember Winston, he was arrested, I'd say between eight thirty and nine for failure to disperse. Um, does that mean at that time that the, the event was supposed to be over and that everyone was supposed to be dispersing?
Everyone was supposed to comply with the commands of, of our officers out where we gave three orders to disperse, basically to move out of that location. Uh, where they went to disperse to, uh, we, they had different uh, avenues to leave, but uh, at that point, it was very clear that people uh, at, that were standing in the street uh, were given an order to move and disperse.
So if the event was still going on at, after midnight, um, did, did that order change between nine and midnight or was it just not enforced or, or, or can you help me with that?
So the dispersal orders are given at the time for that time that the officers need to clear the street uh, or to get people out. Now, uh, if they reassemble uh, at a, in a, during a different time, then we give, and, and we determine that they need to be dispersed again, then we'll give additional dispersal orders. Uh, we, we gave multiple throughout the, the weekend, uh, multiple dispers- dispersal orders uh, in different types of situations, whether it was uh, blocking traffic or, or if it was a, a crowd that was assaulting officers or damaging property and had to maintain order. And that's one way to do it is to give those dispers- dispersal orders uh, so that we can get everyone out and uh, and provide a safe environment for the people who are out demonstrating safely.
Um, a- again, well, specifically with Councilmember Winston, there were and I, I don't know the count, maybe uh, the number of officers that made that arrest. Would you consider that um, as, as justified um, process or did was that excessive or is that typical for um, an arrest?
You know, I mean, please, with all due respect, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna sit and try Councilman uh, Winston's case. Uh, that's, that's going to be something for the courts to decide. The officers had probable cause to make that arrest and uh, I've, I've seen the video of it. I, I don't see any misdo- misdoings of the officers. Uh, and they treated uh, that situation like they treated several others during this past weekend. So uh, that's something that can be taken into the court and he can, that can be decided at that point, but this is not the forum for me to do that.
And that's fair. It's just concerning to me. Um, and I'm not asking and, and don't think that we need uh, special treatment as council members. But I just see it as, as, as our, as our role to be um, peacemakers, to be a part of the team. And I just, and I know the public also feels that that was quite a message um, for uh, council member to be arrested. Um, um, when he, it didn't appear that there was any violence um, or any illegal activity. I know you can't, you may not elaborate, but that was just quite a message. It, it, it um, when peaceful and lawful protesting is allowed, I, I just felt like that that really sent a message. I'm also um, questioning the um, the arrest during the COVID crisis. I know that going, that we were trying to empty out the jails because we were worried about um, individuals in jails. So I don't know if there's another process or, or something to be considered for people that are, are not being violent or looting or, or, or committing a, a blatant crime. So, um,
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Here, here's the la- the last I'll say about this. All right, so um, I disagree with you. It was violent. Officers were being assaulted. Uh, it's very simple. We give a dispersal order. We give it three times. We give time and we give locations for people to leave. Very simple. You turn, you walk away and you leave. Uh, if you're not going to do that, you're going to be subject to arrest. Uh, and that goes for anyone, whether it's a council member, uh, whether it's the mayor, uh, whether it's another police officer that's in plain clothes, uh, that's what's going to happen. We have to maintain order in those types of situations. And like I mentioned earlier, uh, as, as a command, in command, I'm not um, watch my officers to get assaulted. And whether you're doing the assault or not, if you're in the way, then we still, you're, you're in violation of the law and that's what our officers did. So I, I really think that we uh, we can talk about this all day. I don't want to do that. I think there are other I think there are other matters that we need to discuss about this whole incident, about the entire weekend.
Okay. And then my last question, I listened to Chief Putney's call earlier today. And Chief Putney said, um, when there was a question about the, um, potential protesters, um, during the RNC convention, but this doesn't really, it's not specific to the RNC convention. Chief Putney, you said that protesters cannot come to a protest with a weapon. Can you clarify that? And I, the reason I add say that because just a couple of weeks ago, there were, there were, there was a protest in different state capitals and individuals were bringing a a weapon. They were brandishing their weapons or showing them openly. So are weapons allowed at protests?
Okay, so this is the, uh, best way I can answer that without being an attorney because our attorneys are working through that very thing. There are two different amendments that we're talking about. One is the freedom of speech. If there is a protest that is organized and ongoing, you cannot then walk up armed. Um, you're talking about the Second Amendment, which is people who are doing this around the country who are going to, uh, an organized protest under the Second Amendment freedoms with weapons. And that's what we're working through because that's what's most concerning. Because that's what becomes a legal, uh, conundrum that we're gonna have to get clarity around because we expect those kinds of things to happen here. But right now, it depends on is this a First Amendment type of protest, which is people there, uh, expressing themselves? Or is this someone talking about more of a Second Amendment under the First Amendment, which is I'm coming to demonstrate my right to have a weapon open uh, because I'm worried that people are trying to take that right from me. Again, it's a, it's a nuance and a very complicated conversation that's going on with the attorneys right now. So we can get clarity before we see that here.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Newton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Chief Jennings.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I want to thank you for your efforts, uh, in this difficult time. I also want to, uh, to thank you for acknowledging the injustice, uh, in, uh, Mr. Floyd's death. The the wrongdoing of the officer, uh, and and hopefully you would agree, the the accompanying officers as well. I want to commend, uh, all of the the peaceful protesters that we've seen here in our city. You can look across the country. And you can see, uh, city after city where protesters are engaging in violent destructive behavior. And I'm so proud that that we're setting an example, uh, here in Charlotte. Uh, I think that the, the, uh, the protest at First Ward Park yesterday uh, was a a shining example of that, uh, where, uh, protests can happen, uh, extend their message, you know, we can, uh, have our message heard and we can do it in a peaceful manner. Uh, having that, I, I know that there's, uh, should always be an emphasis on on de-escalation. And I know that we've talked about that within our police department policy, uh, literally for years now. And we've taken strides to, uh, to incorporate policy uh, that implores our officers to to de-escalate situations rather than the the alternative. Uh, and I, I've noticed that, uh, that our officers seem to be employing some tactics here in crowd control uh, that that maybe uh, at at face value, uh, appear somewhat, um, uh, violent or dangerous or potentially destructive. The thing that, uh, that I guess, uh, most prominently comes to mind are the flashbangs. Uh, where, uh, those get deployed and they, I I think, you know, uh, they, they seem by their very nature to be, to be dangerous. Uh, rubber bullets would probably be the same. I've seen, uh, folks who have, who have actually, you know, lost their eyesight, uh, when they had not just directly been hit by a rubber bullet, but, you know, they've been hit by a ricochet. Uh, and I just wanted to ask, you know, um, what, what is the wisdom? Uh, so I don't know if we're using rubber bullets, uh, today, but but we're certainly using flashbangs. Uh, and if we are interested in de-escalating situations, if we're interested in in our officers uh, not being, uh, the the folks that are are maybe potentially causing, you know, violence and destructive, uh, uh, results, uh, themselves, uh, what is the wisdom in in tactics such as flashbangs?
Uh, that's, that's a very good question and and I think you kind of answered it. You you said the folks that are involved in violent and destructive behavior. Uh, so, uh, let me, I, I'll tell you that none of our officers ever want it to get to the point to where we're using flashbangs. Uh, and and you mentioned rubber bullets. No, we, we did not use rubber bullets. It, I think what you're referring to are pepper ball, um, uh, munitions. Uh, but, uh, when we have gotten to that point, uh, it is at the point of being out of hand. Uh, so, uh, when you say de-escalation, uh, when our mobile force is put into action, uh, at that point, all de-escalation efforts have been, have been exhausted. Uh, so, uh, if you ever notice that we do not put a mobile field force, and and when I say that, I mean, the ones that are in the 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 suits and the paddings and the helmets. Uh, oftentimes, uh, you're just gonna see a bike officers. Uh, look at the, uh, look at the fifteen hundred or so people that gathered Sunday. Uh, you did not see a single officer in riot gear. Uh, you saw bike officers escorting them and and it was peaceful. They were, they were having conversations with our officers. And and that's our goal. And like I mentioned earlier, that's crowd control. We can do that all day. Uh, and and we welcome that. Uh, I think that officers stand in solidarity with the message that, uh, this is, this, what we saw in Minneapolis is not just reflective on, uh, on us as a profession, uh, it's reflective on us as a society. And we have to heal and move on from that. So, uh, so what I'll tell you is that, uh, we, we've already attempted de-escalation when we get to the point of flashbangs uh, and and pepper ball and 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 that type of dispersment efforts.
Yeah, I, I think we're aware that that there have been outside instigators uh, who have come into our city and, uh, 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 ramped up or escalated, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the, the nature of of the protest, uh, in their own right. And I, I wanted to ask about those, uh, those folks, uh, do we what tactics or are we, so whatever you can disclose, uh, are we employing tactics to identify those individuals and to, um, uh, make sure that that their efforts are, uh, are mitigated?
Well, I mean, let me, let me start by on that, answering that is, um, it doesn't matter where you're from. Uh, if you're gonna come and and try to destroy our city, uh, then we're not gonna tolerate that. So whether you're from, uh, I don't care where you're from, whether you're from our state, uh, our city, uh, another city, it's, 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 it's not something that we're gonna ever sit back and watch happen. Uh, we do have, uh, people that in our agency that look out for, uh, information of other people coming in, uh, for those purposes. I think that is pretty evident throughout the country that that happens and that's a tactic for, uh, people who, uh, want to protest and 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 cause property damage and assault. Uh, what we have to do as a community and as a, as a city are the people, you know, we hear about, well, what can I do? What can I do? We can't get into a state that where we let someone who is an agitator reflect on the beha- on an individual behavior. So you have several who come out to peacefully protest and to march, um, and keep everything lawful. Uh, and then at that, at a certain point, they they get caught up into the the moment uh, and they begin to engage in criminal activity as well. Uh, so we need more people like we saw this weekend who will stand between the violence, uh, and the police and will ca- have that calming voice to keep people in 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 line, uh, and to have, uh, peaceful, lawful and productive demonstrations.
You had mentioned, uh, the dispersal orders. I, I wanted to ask, and and I think, I think you had said that, that, uh, that there are three orders that are given, uh, before any action is taken. Uh, I'd ask that that be confirmed. At the same time, do we have a prescribed time period in which, uh, a crowd is asked to or or should disperse? Or is this something that, uh, officers are taking it upon themselves to decide on a case by case, uh, somewhat subjective basis?
No, I mean, that, that's something that is discussed in great detail while we're, uh, communication with the command center, uh, and the officers that are on the street. Uh, and so here's what ideally, ideally, we can give three dispersal orders. And in between each of those, we give a, a good amount of time period, whether that's, you know, ten minutes or fifteen minutes. Uh, we give that time period to allow for dispersal because we, when we give that order, we want to give people an opportunity to comply. So when they hear that first order, they should walk away. When they hear the second order, they should walk away. And when the third order is given, they need to know, they probably need to pick up the pace and and get out of there because we're gonna clear the street. And the reason we're doing that is because there's destruction uh, or assaults that are taking place, whether on our officers or on other people. Uh, and and that's a sign that it's time to go. Uh, so, uh, non-compliance of that could lead to an arrest or, uh, being subject to, uh, um, munitions and things that we're gonna do to get people out of the streets at that point.
Have we, so have we done everything right here over the past three days? Would you consider that, uh, that we have, you know, uh, uh, nailed it here or 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 is there room for improvement? And and if so, what would you consider that, uh, that room for improvement to be?
You know, I, I would love to, uh, sit and tell you we're a perfect agency and we've done everything right. Here's what I'll say though. Uh, even if it is, even if we have done everything right, we're gonna review and make it even better. Uh, because we're always looking to improve on how we engage. Uh, and that's, that's important to us. So, um, so to say that we did everything perfect and everything right, uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put myself out there for that. Uh, but I can tell you that I'm, I'm very proud of the officers. You know, we can sit and and in command and we can direct all we want. But at the same time, you have officers out there with, you know, forty pounds of equipment uh, that are marching in the streets and that are chasing and running and, uh, trying to get in position. Uh, and it's exhausting and working twelve hours of doing that. I, I, this profession is, profession is not for everyone and and our officers stepped up and and very proud of what they did this weekend.
And this is my last question. Uh, so, uh, whether it be here, whether it be across the country, what has our department learned over the past three days? And, uh, and I guess as a byproduct of that, uh, what, uh, what can we improve upon based upon what we've learned over the past three days?
I, I think we learned that there's no immunity to uprising and unrest and, uh, I, I, I think for years, you, I've heard other agencies say, well, we have a great relationship with our community. This will never happen here. That's so far from the truth. Charlotte's perfect example of that. Uh, now you look at cities that are having these same issues uh, that that we're seeing and some of the bigger cities are seeing, uh, and it just, it's just proof that we're not immune. What can we do better? I, I, I think we're doing it. We're always constantly looking at how we can, uh, engage with our community, things that we can build trust. Uh, that's why it's so frustrating, uh, that we're dealing with this because we feel like we've, we've been making progress and and building more trust and mending fences from twenty sixteen. And now we have to step back and see what did, what did this do to set us back and how much ground do we have to make up, uh, at this point? So uh, it's concerning and and it's, it's upsetting and and we feel some of the same frustration the public does. Uh, and and it's, it's, it's something that we're gonna have to heal from as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Watlington?
Hi, I've just got two questions. Um, the first one was very similar to, uh, Councilmember Newton's question regarding time. I want to understand a little bit more, um, on a broad level. What role does time have in the previously known as use of force continuum? I, I just want to understand if time as a factor is codified or if it's part of the policy or how that plays a role in general.
Time is, is, uh, you talking about in terms of the use of force?
Yes, uh, let me ask it differently. I want to make sure.
Dispersment that we're, we're just referring to.
Uh, no, I'm not talking about dispersment. I'm talking about you've got a certain level of what of agitation or a certain level of aggression. And it is not increasing, but it's, it's happening over an extended period of time.
Oh, understood. Yeah, it, it, that, that truly is, it depends. And and I, I hate to give such a um, vague answer, but each situation is different and and each situation has to be evaluated a- at the time that we're dealing with. And, uh, so, uh, to say that there is a set time that we have to give for certain, for certain compliance, uh, you know, it, there's a lot of factors that play into that and I couldn't nail that down with this one.
Okay, so I'll just say that I'd like to, well, I understand that you certainly can't, uh, say this is the rule every time. I'd be interested in how that reasoning is standardized in, um, in training. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. And it, and 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 just a little bit more, it, it has to be within reason and with safety, uh, considerations, not just for the officer, but for the person that we're dealing with. So all of that is, are things that the environment that you have to, uh, that you have to look at. So when you start talking about, you know, how much time to give certain situations.
Okay. Um, and then my next question is, um, as I think about, and congratulations if I haven't already told you, uh, look forward to your leadership. I'm interested as you come into your, um, into your term. In addition to the work that's already happened since, uh, twenty sixteen and the work, um, in regards to community policing, what are some things maybe coming out of this weekend or given the current climate across the country, where are the gaps or opportunities? What kinds of programs or actions do you think could fill some of the, um, some of the remaining holes in terms of bridging that gap and building trust in the community? Cause you mentioned that there's been so much work. So it's frustrating for those that are aware of some of the things that have happened. What do you think the opportunity is in terms of either communicating or growing, uh, programs or creating new ones?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think one thing that we look at, um, and that we, we are going to get better at is the policy review. You know, we, we start looking and people talk about, well, what are we learning from this? What are we gonna do? Uh, and and we've, we've regularly look at policy and change it. But when you have an incident like this, then you start to look back and say, well, what are some things that we might have missed? Who would have thought in a million years that we would be looking at, uh, someone pressuring their knee in the side of someone's neck, uh, to the point of death? And, uh, so we go back and we say, where do we cover? And we do, and we know we cover the chokehold, but we still have to go back and say, uh, are we doing the right thing? Is this clear and and concise so our officers understand? Uh, and even though we still want to say that we, we never would, um, suspect an officer to take those actions and 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 we've never seen it within our agency, but you always have to look at policy review. Also, you look at, um, uh, you know, we, we, you talked about like with the community. One of the things that I know Chief Putney has has started and I think is, is, uh, doing really well that it, it was intentionally for the the Republican National Convention, but the ambassador program where you have people that can, that can go out and and be our voice and be a voice of reason. Now, we also have to worry about their safety as well because they have to know that when it gets to a certain level, that it's time for them to leave as well. Uh, and so we want to make sure that that they stay safe. Uh, so there are some things that we can take away from that that may be ongoing, that may have been intentional for the RNC, but but I may want to look at and say, this is something that we need to keep moving on.
Thanks. Those are my two.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Chief Jennings, Chief Putney, thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Have any questions? Uh, just a, a brief comment, Madam Mayor. Part of the joy, I believe, in being a district rep is, um, you know what's happening on the street. Part of the joy, I believe, in being a district rep is you know what's happening on the street. And part of the job of being a council member, just showing up only for the, the rubbing cuttings and, and the big celebrations, but showing up when the community's at need. So I had the opportunity to be there Friday night and had the opportunity to walk with Spence Cochran and talk to some of my neighbors. Again, you know, Bayes Fort Road is a quarter, but it's surrounded by communities and neighborhoods. And neighbors were rightly upset about what was happening literally in front of their front doors. So I want to thank the police officers first and foremost, many of whom I know by name that work out of that district office, for their, their patience, thanking them for their diligence, and thanking them for just being a good representative of the city that night. Our police department is not perfect. They have learned from their mistakes and over the last four years have tried really, really, really hard to bridge the difference in terms of what's happening in our community. They've worked with ministers and barber shop owners and everyday citizens trying to bridge this gap in our community. And I hope that what happened in Minnesota doesn't, the artwork that they have done. Certainly, we got more work to do moving forward. This is not the, the end of anything, it's the beginning. And police community relationships is a marathon. It will be with us for a while. But I, I want to say that, again, I and the protester had every right to be out there protesting. I believe in why they were out there. I believe that it is important for individual citizens to express their beliefs. And that's what they were doing on Friday night. They were protesting what happened in Minnesota. They were protesting what happened in New York where a white woman weaponized her whiteness against a black man. And they were protesting what they saw in Atlanta and when two citizens cornered and killed another black guy. They were protesting injustice. And they have every right to do so in a manner that is calm, in a manner that is peaceful, in a manner that it brings attention to the problem of racism and discrimination in our communities and across this country. What happened on Friday night on Bayes Fort Road at some point started to be very peaceful and then took a turn for the worse. I was there, I saw it. Officers only got riot gear after they were attacked over and over and over again by bottles and bricks, et cetera, after exercising a measure of restraint and cooperation and a lot of understanding. Because many of the officers I spoke with said the same thing that Chief Jennings said in his opening remarks, that what they saw was, in Minnesota, was not policing, it was murder. So where do we go from here? I hope as a community that we could acknowledge that we have to have peaceful protests and acknowledge the fact what we saw over the weekend in some cases was not. But we don't really focus too much on the rioting and not forget why people were in the streets in the first place. Racism, discrimination, hatred against folks that look like me. And so I think as a community, I would hope that we would find a way to demonstrate with our mind, our will, and the power of our vote to create positive change here in Charlotte and across this country. I hope that we would allow our police department to protect and serve. And I hope we would govern ourselves, that when we do protest, and which I think we are to be protesting, that we do so in a manner that focuses the attention on the problem that we're trying to solve versus picking up bricks, rocks, and bringing the attention of that. So we got work to do in Charlotte, got work to do, Madam Mayor. And as a district two representative, I'm prepared to do the work with you. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Graham, your words are very true. Thank you for that.
So thanks to everyone. Everyone has had an opportunity to speak.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have a follow up.
Oh, Mr. Winston?
I, I think something that Chief, Chief Putney said was incorrect in terms of the open carry protests. Those were not Second Amendment protests. Those were actually reopen protests that were, people were doing as a First Amendment right protest against the stay at home orders that have been in place in different states and different municipalities. Those folks carried their weapons to those places because of their Second Amendment rights. Some people may, may think that, that it was to intimidate, but nevertheless, they had those Second Amendment rights. We are in an open carry state, but I know that there are, from, from very seasoned attorneys, that there seems to be this very discreet law that is being used right now, which makes it impermissible. We are arresting people that have purchased guns with permits or also have concealing carry permits as well. So I know you said that we are looking for some clarification, but we know that there are going to be protests tonight. We know that people are, are going to be following the law and their constitution and carrying weapons. So please, I would love some clarification now as to what we can expect for people that are carrying weapons, particularly black people, because there does seem to be a difference on, on what they should expect our police officers' behavior will be towards them.
So Mr. Winston, I see that Mr. Baker got up and moved away, but I think your question is for an opinion on?
No, it's for, is to know, it's, it's for Chief Putney, for to know how our police officers will be handling people that are carrying firearms, that have, that are legally purchased and are being legally carried outside of this very discreet law that we are learning exists now, that CNPD and the city attorneys don't even really know how to handle right now. We need to get clarification right now before we leave this dais about how our people will be handled in the street tonight.
Chief Putney?
Yes, ma'am, I'd love to. I was not mistaken, I was absolutely correct. The law is clear. You cannot bring a weapon to an organized protest. What I was saying is the difficulty that the attorneys are going to have to give us clarity around, and they must, is we have the right to their arms and people are saying they're coming to a First Amendment freedom of speech and they're exercising their Second Amendment, which is to carry that firearm. So what I'm saying is, right now, we have here the statute that does not allow for you to have a weapon at a protest. What I'm saying is, we got to discern between now and RNC, whether or not Second Amendment piece of it, which is the complicated legal matter, so that we can have clarity when we expect to see those kinds of Second Amendment protests occur.
So, so what I'm hearing you saying is that open carry laws are suspend, rights are suspended for people in Charlotte around protests right now and carried and concealed permits are not, will not be recognized tonight in Charlotte by CNPD? Is that correct?
Yes, what I'm telling you is you cannot come armed to a protest. That's how we're.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So I've asked Mr. Baker to get back to the council and be able to address Mr. Winston's question from the attorney's perspective. So with that, thank you, Chief Jennings and Chief Putney. I don't know, Mr. Jones? This is the end of the report from over the weekend. And so I guess we go right into our next item, Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, and I also, as we go into our next item, which deals with the Charlotte Business Inclusion Policy revisions, I would just like to not only thank the community, but also the council in terms of Team Charlotte and how we are dealing with these very difficult times. And I don't want us to lose sight of our solid waste workers who each night or early in the morning, they come out and clean the streets, deal with some of the issues out there, transportation, fire, general services. And I just wanted to say that it's a team effort to keep our city safe. So with that said, Mayor, I do believe I will turn this over to the committee chair and allow him to introduce the topic.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, everyone. First, let me recognize and thank the members of the Workforce and Business Development Committee, my vice chair, Councilmember Bakari, Councilmember Ashmere, Councilmember Graham, and Councilmember Johnson. Tonight, I have asked staff to review the council on the Charlotte Business Inclusion Policy revisions that were derived from the 2017 disparity study and recommended by then the Economic Development Committee and our Charlotte Business Inclusion Advisory Committee. These changes are consistent with the city council priority to grow and develop our minority women and small business enterprise community through inclusion on contracting opportunities. These policy revisions will increase contracting opportunities available to our Charlotte MWSBEs. At our May 11th committee meeting, staff reviewed these recommendations with the committee. Since the old committee had originally acted on these, I thought it was very important that new committee members get a chance to see firsthand the recommendations that we'll be voting on June 8. I recognize this a little bit out of the ordinary, Mayor, so I apologize and thank you for having some latitude on the procedure. But I think it's importantly, it's important that we support our MWSBE community. And this is something the city council made a priority, and I think this is a big step for us. A placeholder will be placed on the June 8 city council business meeting, but city council take action. Without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Phil Rieger to kick off the presentation. But I wanted to thank staff, the CBI staff, for all their hard work and Thomas Powers. Phil?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Phil Rieger. I'm the Director of the Department of General Services, and I'm accountable for the Charlotte Business Inclusion Program. Tonight, I'm fortunate to have with me Thomas Powers, Senior Assistant City Attorney, and Kay Elmore, Chief Procurement Officer, to assist me with the presentation. Tonight, we'll preview amendments to the Charlotte Business Inclusion Policy. Those amendments are a result of recommendations made by the Charlotte Business Inclusion Advisory Committee. And they've been, they were endorsed originally by the Economic Development Committee. If I could go to the next slide, please? And so tonight, Mr. Powers will address the question, what is a disparity study? And he'll review the 2017 disparity study considerations. And then we'll wrap up tonight's presentation with Ms. Elmore, and she will discuss or review the recommendations that were made and how they flow into the policy amendments. Next slide. Before I turn it over, I just want to make a special thanks to our Charlotte Business Inclusion Advisory Committee, and specifically want to thank the leadership of Stephanie Burwell and Edison Castles. Without this committee, these recommendations wouldn't be moving forward, and we just appreciate their hard work. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Thomas Powers and let him continue.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much again for your time. Want to answer the question tonight of what is a disparity study? Again, the disparity study takes a look at the actual community for the locality in question, which will be Charlotte, and looks at all of the businesses that are here, minority women or small businesses, and their availability as well as their utilization. That disparity study is, is a drop in the bucket at that time. And what it does is, based on the information that's provided, it allows for a community to actually engage in race conscious or gender conscious measures if there is a disparity based on the availability and utilization of those businesses. Again, the disparity has to be below an 80% threshold. That means for out of 100 businesses that are available, if we only use 80 of those or less, that would then be a disparity, which will allow us to engage in race conscious or gender conscious measures. Why does the city actually conduct disparity study? Again, as I indicated before, based on the actual information, if there is an actual disparity in regards to utilization, the city is allowed under the law to engage in a race conscious or gender conscious program. Without the actual undertaking and conducting of a disparity study, we would not have the legal ability to engage in such programs. Typically, it is about a five-year timeframe that disparity study should be engaged. This will allow us to ensure that if we were ever challenged in courts, that we have the ability to say that the disparity study is as recent as possible in regards to the economic conditions that businesses are facing at that time. Again, just want to make sure that you are aware, we did have a disparity study in 2017, and soon we'll be undertaking or kicking off the process for a disparity study in 2022. Next slide, please. Out of the 2017 disparity study, our consultant actually looked at and considered various aspects and made considerations and/or recommendations to the city as a whole. Before you, on this slide, there's several items that the consultant recommended. Again, at the top, you'll see that one of the items was an aspirational goal of 20.9%. This is where the city, if they're undertaking any kind of contracting and there is not a disparity per se in regards to that item, then we would be able to set a goal of 20.9% as an aspirational goal for any contractor to bid upon. Again, there were several other aspects of this, such as the designated contract strategy or actually addressing subcontracting goals as well, which Kay will allude to and speak about later. Next slide, please. Again, this was some of the other considerations that were brought forth by the consultant in regards to a review of our actual disparity study and our program at that time in 2017. Next slide, please. I will turn this over to Kay, who will talk about the current recommendations from the CBIAC as well as the Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I'm incredibly pleased to bring forward the recommendations that have been supported both by the CBIAC and our Economic Development Committee. I'll run through those briefly and then allow you an opportunity to ask questions as you might. The first revision for the policy will be in addition to the history of the program and legal justification for adoption of our 2017 disparity study. That's required in every revision of our policy. We are, secondly, increasing the time that we allow for our prime contractors and our MWSB subcontractors to work together on utilization by giving our bidders a 24-hour extension to finalize CBI Form 3. The CBI Form 3 is about supplier subcontractor utilization, and it is included in the exhibit if you would like to take a look at that for more additional information. We're also working in our good faith efforts. While we believe in good faith efforts, what we really want to have happen is, is we want our bidders to come forward with MWSB utilization out the gate. And so we are modifying our points and breaking down work, which is unbundling contracts from 15 to 10. And then, secondly, we're working in, on the good faith efforts for negotiating our good faith efforts with MWSBs. That means we are pushing them harder to work on back and forth negotiation. Our next policy revision is about increasing the duration of, excuse me, if you will move forward, please, on this slide. Thank you. We are increasing the duration of our SB certification from three years to four years. We are also eliminating the ability to count a single MWSB towards an MWBE goal and an SB goal. Those must be counted separately. And in both instances, primes must, if they do not meet the goals for utilization, they must go forward with a good faith effort for both parties. And then finally, one of the more striking revisions we blew to the policy that's beneficial specifically to MWSBs is lowering our construction subcontracting threshold from 300,000 to 200,000. That benefits our MWSB firms by allowing them to bond at 200,000. We listened to them through reviewing disparity study findings and talking about recommendations and felt that it would be, it would be appropriate to modify the construction threshold down to support their ability to bond and then participate in those projects. We also believe in a smaller project or just a, what we call creating a right-sized opportunity where our MWSB firms can participate. where our MWSB firms can participate, and they can grow into bigger jobs, they can build capacity through gaining experience in smaller jobs. And then we're also increasing the pool of available opportunities in general. And then, one of the final, but lesser modifications we're making is, is basically we have revisions that we would consider to be non-substantive or administrative changes. And so our next go-forward steps are as follows. We want to have a vote to reaffirm the previous committee's recommendations at the June 8 Workforce and Business Development Committee. If it so pleases the council, we have a placeholder prepared for the June 8 council for adoption of the CBI policy revisions at that time. And then going forward into the program, we'll be working with legal, with our CBI team, with our inclusion advocates across the city, with our prime vendors and our MWSB vendors to make sure that we can work through smoothly transitioning into these policy revisions. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time?
Are there any questions for the chair or the staff? There are no questions, we'll see.
Mayor?
Yes? Mr. Driggs?
So I'm not sure if I remember the whole history or evolution. I know we've had conversations in the past. I'm just not aware of what the role was of the prime contractors in this process and in these changes. So has this been done with full buy-in from all of the parties?
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Mitchell, you're on mute, I think. I think you're on mute.
Mayor, thank you. Councilman Driggs, yes, I think the CBI Advisory Council did a great job of getting input from our prime contractors. And then, you know, on the committee, we have two prime contractors to serve as that voice, and so it was unanimous in the committee meeting and great input from all our prime contractors who are doing work with the city of Charlotte.
Okay, good work. Thank you.
Any other questions for the committee or staff? All right, we'll see it on June the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Community Recovery Task Force recommendations. We had two items that we asked the council to review, continuing the task force review and coming back to the council. So the first one is the Housing Recovery Group, and I'd like to address this to Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an agenda item that reappears on our agenda from last week. The council wanted us to take it back to the task force for confirmation, and we did that for $4 million for rent relief, $4 million for mortgage relief, $2 million for above-roof capital campaign SRO housing. The task force approved the staff recommendation by an 11-0 vote, and I ask for your consideration tonight for it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Graham or any questions for the task force group?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. I guess we have a second.
Second.
So is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval of the Housing Recovery?
Yeah, I do have a slide discussed, I'm sorry, I was trying to get my hand up with the appropriate time.
Mr. Winston?
Yeah, I know I may, I wanted to push this last week when this was presented, so we had a chance to discuss it. We did have a chance to discuss it this past Thursday in our task force meeting. I will just let the colleagues know that there's still a lot more work to be done, even behind this $10 million that we are appropriating. It's not going to be sufficient. It is building off of something that we, a past decision that we have already made. But in terms of the type of scale and the type of leverage that we need to be, that we need to put behind those dollars, we aren't there yet. So I hope we continue to pay attention to this. I know we have another $10 million to work with, but we need to continue to look at this $10 million and how to best leverage it and push it forward. So I will vote to approve it with a little trepidation as to the best and highest use of these dollars.
All right, you've heard the motion that's been made in second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say, oh, I have to do a roll call, sorry, guys, I forgot about that. Ms. Iselt? Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
I think that's six, if everyone else will say yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, with that, the motion passes. All right, now we'll go to the second area, is the Airport Economy Recovery, and I recognize Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So colleagues, you'll recall that last week I presented the report from the Airport Task Force Working Group, and at the time, council approved the report but carved out Section 7, which contained these concessions to.
I want things to mute.
Route 267, I think.
Background music. So we deferred action on paragraph 7, which was the one that had provisions for relief to concession airport, and that was because there were unanswered questions related to a proposal to add a requirement that health insurance be attached to those relief measures for the furloughed workers of the companies benefiting from it. I want to say, and you should have received a memo from Dent Kegel yesterday that provided information related to some of the questions that were asked to help to shape this conversation tonight. I want to say first, I think we all understand that the prospect of loss of health insurance is a source of distress for those workers, and that is of concern to us, we care about them. The difficulty is that the COVID virus has created a disaster for businesses and employees throughout the city, and we would love to protect everybody from hardship, but truth is, we're really just not able to. So we need to choose our policies here carefully. I think that adding a health benefit requirement to airport relief measures would not be a good course of action for the city for a number of reasons, and I just want to quickly walk through what they are to frame the conversation. First of all, the mission of the working group was to try and shore the continued existence of airport concessionaires so that employees would have jobs to return to when conditions improve. A particular concern in this work was the viability of the sub-concessionaires, almost all of which are federal disadvantaged business enterprises. I believe we should not stray from that purpose. Second, the working group consisted of nine members, four councilmembers and seven people with knowledge of the airport economy and/or working with concessionaires. After a robust discussion of the pros and cons of a health insurance requirement, the group voted 9 to 2 not to include it in our recommendation, and the final report of the working group was adopted unanimously without it. But the most important point that I want to emphasize is HMS Host has made it clear that if we do attach this requirement to the relief package, they won't accept it. They have their own business reasons, but it is just not something they are able to do. So the outcome of including the requirement would be that the workers did not get insurance, and their prospects for unemployment would suffer because of the financial condition of their employers. Another point, four, trying to offer the insurance only to host employees raised questions of discrimination against hosts, and it would also discriminate against the furloughed employees of any other company that benefited from the airport relief and did not provide them with health insurance. Is it really our intention to place this burden on the DBE sub-concessionaires? Fifth, the small business relief proposed by Mayor Potem Iselt's working group does not include an insurance requirement. Would equal protection considerations dictate that all small businesses receiving assistance from the city provide health insurance if airport concessionaires are required to do so? Sixth point, airport management has made it clear that it would regard an insurance requirement as harmful to its business partners and ultimately, therefore, to their employees. Given the value that CLT represents to Charlotte, we should be sensitive to advice from its management. Final point, my understanding of the legal position is, one, there is no issue at all with the relief proposed by the Airport Working Group, but, two, there could be challenges if the insurance requirement is attached, and, three, there is no assurance that these challenges would be resolved in favor of the city. This is a risky course of action. In short, we would open a huge can of worms if we tried to impose a health insurance requirement on HMS Host, and most important, all our employees would end up with is no health insurance benefits and diminished job prospects. I urge council not to make this change to the recommended relief package, and if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt paragraph 7 as originally written.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. I just wanted to make a note before we, council begins, that we have had speakers on this item, and it's just continued for the council debate, and so while you have resources that you may address the question, the staff is here along with representatives for HMS Host and also representatives of the task force, members of the task force are available for questions, but right now, it's not an open item for speakers, it's actually to help you with your decision-making. So I have three, two people with questions, so we had a motion and a second, and I'll go to Mr. Winston. Mr. Newton, I have to, Mr. Winston, I wanted to address, Mr. Winston has raised his hand first.
Yep, my question is about the procedure. Since this is a vote, and this is an action item, usually it gets presented, people have the chance to make public comment on it. Why are people not allowed to make public comment on this action that we're going to take tonight?
Because by our rules, we had a public hearing where I think we had at least nine speakers on this item as it was, and council deferred it as a debate to come back to the council for this one specific amendment. That was the motion. It's not a new item on our agenda, and we've already had speakers publicly able to sign up. If you recall, this is a week old, I think, okay? All right, I have Ms. Watlington.
I don't have a question, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to lift up a couple of things. Just firstly, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Driggs said about the fact that we understand completely that this pandemic has had a tremendous effect on employees and also businesses, and so didn't take it lightly in my investigation of whether or not to support the amendment, that there were a lot of other impacts at play. The key thing for me in this one is that we understand from HMS Host that they will not accept this money if this condition is put in play, which I think would do far more harm to the HMS employees that we're trying to protect right now. So that was the key piece for me, and I will be supporting the motion.
All right, Mr. Newton?
Yes, I would offer a substitute motion, Madam Mayor, to include an amendment, so not an alternative, but an amendment that would add sections F and G as presented in the previous slide to the end of the recommendation number seven. And if I could also reserve time to speak on that, that amendment, I would appreciate it, Madam Mayor, assuming there's a second.
And can you tell me, so we have a copy, I think, of Mr. Newton's amendment posted, so I'll give everybody time to read it through, and then we will ask for, if Mr. Newton has made a motion for a substitute, and we would ask if there is a second for that after you've had a couple minutes to read through this. Is there, are there any questions about the alternative? We have a second on the motion, all right? We have a substitute motion, and is there discussion? I think Ms. Iselt had a question. Ms. Iselt?
Well, I guess I need to understand from our city attorney what, or I don't know if Mr. Kegel's available, what the implications of this alternative would be. I think, like Ms. Watlington, I initially supported the idea of looking into this. I think it was a great idea. I do understand that our airport is actually coming back to life a little bit faster than some of the airports. I know that's relative, but American Airlines has chosen to route a lot of their flights through Dallas and Charlotte, and so I think the best goal for everyone is that the businesses be able to open up again and not shut down. And so when they open up again, they can bring their folks back, their employees back, and therefore have their health insurance, and that, to me, would be the goal. So I don't know, Mr.?
Mr. Kegel is available to speak.
Yeah.
To ask the implications especially. He is, he's coming on board. All right, Mr. Kegel, you, Ms. Iselt, do you have a specific question? Or you, what's the question?
Well, I'd like to know what the implications of G would be, and again, more in practical terms, what that does to business, if we really think about our goal of getting these businesses back up and running sooner than later.
Mr. Kegel?
And I apologize, I'm just reading these items now, so as with.
Okay, well, we'll give you a minute, and you're gonna, we were having a hard time, you're gonna have to speak up, really.
I apologize. Hopefully.
You shouldn't, I think, just take the time to read. I think most of us are seeing it for the first time, so.
So notwithstanding all previous items, allow HMS Host to defer the fixed space rental payments for its sub-concessionaire partners for the period of July 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020, with repayment terms to be negotiated. So I believe that item, as I read that, so let me back up and say that HMS Host, we have a contract with HMS Host, we do not have contracts with their sub-concession partners. So I would say that I believe that G would be consistent with one of the other items. It would be item number letter 7E, fixed space rent deferral, July through December. I think that, as I read that, that looks to me like it'd be the same thing. I assume, though, the intention of G is to say that HMS Host could allow the sub-concessionaires to defer their rent payments even if HMS Host was not afforded that rent relief. I struggle with how to answer the question, it may be more of a legal question, but what I will say is HMS Host is required to pay us the fixed space rentals for all of the spaces that are under their contract, and that is all of the concession spaces for food and beverage. They just sublease some of those spaces to the local providers, generally speaking, the ACDBE local providers. So I am not, that particular motion or amendment, I think, is consistent with what's previously there, but I don't know how to interpret. I guess what I would say is I would need, I would need to refer to Patrick for a legal interpretation of G and its impact.
All right. Ms. Iselt had the floor, I'm sorry, Mr. Newton.
I wrote this, if I could comment on this.
Let me just get back, I've got, Ms. Iselt, is that, is that the end of your question?
Clear as mud, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I've got Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson, would you like to have Mr. Newton go in front, since he wrote this? Ms. Johnson, would you like to have Mr. Newton go in front of, since he wrote this, to walk through it?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All right, Newton?
For everyone. So I'll start by noting that I've been contacted by a number of community members, also representatives of employees and labor who asked to be a part of tonight's conversation, and were told that, that there wasn't an opportunity for that. I have noted that we do have video feeds for approximately 10 representatives of the industry at our airport here in this meeting. And I harbor concerns about that because I thought that that was something that was discussed pertaining to the task force, the fact that we didn't have labor or employee representation at the table. So having said that, I.
Can I just interrupt you? You referred it to the council, so we've had speakers. I don't want to leave the impression that we've not heard from people on this item. I wanted to say that we are in a discussion of the motion just continuation and people have spoken on it. So I don't, I want to be fair. People that have a feed into this are experts that we worked with and made a recommendation. So I just.
Excluding labor.
And they will only respond if there is a question, Mr. Newton. If they get a question, they'll respond, so.
But have a labor or employee representative here that can respond on behalf of them as well. That's, that's all I'm saying and they're not here. So I wasn't aware that that was going to be the situation. I don't know what other council members were aware that that would be the situation here tonight. But having said that, I do feel like it's important that we acknowledge in a time of a public health crisis that's, you know, we want to make sure that folks have health insurance. So that's what, that's what letter F is, particularly if, you know, we are talking about this, you know, right here, we're renegotiating a contract, right? HMS Host has come to the airport and asked that concessions within its contract be made, rental concessions. And so to that end, not a CARES Act contribution, let's be clear about that. The CARES Act guidelines, and this is something that's been confirmed by our, our city attorney, the CARES Act guidelines do not apply here because this is, you know, the renegotiation, concession of an existing contract, nothing getting from CARES Act dollars. And, and I think also what we have heard, I think oftentimes we hear a lot about why we shouldn't do something rather than saying, hey, why shouldn't we? Right? And without any sort of specific law that prevents us from placing the condition in this instance, once again, I would say, why shouldn't we make sure that our employees or the employees, you know, within our city are provided with health insurance? So that's what condition F does, right? It says that the HMS Host has a condition to accepting roughly, so speaking with, with Mr. Cagle, it was roughly between $5 and $7 million, right, of concessions, so money that they get to keep. We're asking that they pay, and so speaking with Mr. Fox, the attorney for, for HMS Host, they, they agreed to pay roughly 1.8 million in health insurance benefits. That's what item F does. It places that, that condition here whereby to receive the rental relief in items A through E, that health insurance must be provided up until the point that those employees are restored to their previous employment status before COVID-19. And we all want to see that happen, right? And so to council member Isold's point, you know, the sooner that happens, quite frankly, the, the less money, right, that would need to be contributed because they would, these employees would then receive their full health insurance, you know, their health insurance benefits would be restored. So I think there's quite an argument to be made that that 1.8 might be less, the benefits would, would be even more. And the second point here, so G, you know, I know that we all have spoken with and heard the concerns of our sub concessionaires. And so this is to possibly answer Mr. Cagle's question. In letters A through E, there is nothing that specifically earmarks the, the rent relief provided to HMS Host for the sub concessionaires. We, and maybe this is a byproduct of, you know, the way we've conducted business over the years, but, but that separate contract, right, is not, is not, is not mandated, right? So this, this, these concessions being given to HMS Host do not, there's no mandate that they follow or they flow through to the sub concessionaires. And that's exactly what G does, is it says, you know, notwithstanding all previous items, right? So even if, even if, and I know we've heard this, you know, this threat that, hey, we're not going to take the relief that, you know, we're asking for here, if, you know, if you ask us to provide health insurance for our employees, you know, even if that were not to happen, what G does is it says that, that the airport is still allowed the opportunity to provide rent relief to sub concessionaires. Now, it would be subject to HMS Host, you know, agreeing to it, but it's something that's even more specific than what we had in A through E because it does specifically earmark that money if accepted by HMS Host for sub concessionaires. I, I think it's important to note here in this process, you know, we were approached by HMS Host. I, I understand that they actually asked for more than what, than what we're looking at providing today, but, but the inference that somehow if we don't, you know, provide it practically with no strings attached, that it would be denied, I think really undermines the idea of it being needed to survive. And, and I feel like that under the circumstances here, it amounts to us as a council, much like the employees, much like in many respects the sub concessionaires, being held hostage. And it's only fair, given the fact that we are in a public health crisis, given the fact that these folks who work at the airport are likely more, so likely subjected to the risk of COVID-19 above and beyond, right, other members of our community because there are people coming in from out of country every single day, people coming in from other areas that aren't fighting by the same social distancing and the same types of protective guidelines to, to ensure or limit the spread of COVID-19. You know, they're interacting, these folks, they're on the front line. And I think it's, it's only fair that we ask that they be provided the health insurance they need to protect themselves and their families. We just recently, so this past week, there was an employee of HMS Host actually that tested positive for COVID-19. The, the, that person highly suspects that it was the result of working at the airport. So I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing our part to protect every citizen of this, of the city of Charlotte. If we're going to be giving, you know, concessions to a, a large company, one that has, you know, is a subsidiary of a parent that has over 500 million in, in cash on hand as of this past May, I, I feel like, you know, the least we can do is ensure that, that their employees get health insurance. So that's what this does. F and then G, once again, G being in place just in case HMS Host says, no, we're going to walk, well, we can still ensure that the sub concessionaire partners get the rent relief they also need and deserve.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Would anyone like to respond to council members?
Oh, you, I'm sorry, I've got a list of council people that want to speak.
All right, okay. So, no, that's, that's fine. I have a question then. Can I get some history on, on why there, there's a contract with just the two large vendors and then the subcontractors work with those large vendors? Is the, and I know we can't do this right now, but would there be potential for this, for the city to have contracts with those tenants?
I guess that's. Can I address to Mr. Cagle?
Please.
Mr. Cagle?
Yes, so this, this has been a question that has come up from other council members. So as far as the contractual relationship and how it is today, what I can tell you is I, I've been here eight and a half years and the contract has evolved or was created before I came here. But I will tell you that this concept of a prime concessionaire with sub concessionaires is very, very common. I will also tell you that the relationship between the prime concessionaire and the sub concessionaire is mutually beneficial to both parties. One of the reasons that is, is airports, you know, if you think about a restaurant, the only similarity that a restaurant on the street really has with a restaurant in an airport is they both serve food. How they operate, their staffing needs, how they receive their goods, their food, all of those things become more complicated and more difficult in an airport environment. And because of that, it is a very specialty or niche area. So what the relationship allows for is smaller businesses, many times local businesses and ACDBE designated firms to enter into large markets and gain experience and then grow from one store to multiple stores and to multiple locations where the prime concessionaire also does businesses. And I think if you look at the ACDBE, ACDBE partners here in Charlotte, that's exactly what you see. Many of the partners have multiple locations. Some of the partners have multiple concepts. Some of them are sub concessionaires to both host and to parities who handles retail. And then others have multiple locations at other airports or other venues where host and parities operate. And so what it does is allow a small businessperson to enter a very difficult operating market and have the support of the prime concessionaire to grow their business and to expand their business. And ultimately, I think in the CPI presentation, the goal is for those sub concessionaires to grow in such a way that they can then compete ultimately for other airports and other locations and continue to grow their business. And I think that's exactly what you see. The other thing I will say about the contracts, they are, they are what I'm going to call generational type of contracts. They are very long. And the reason that is, is to operate in an airport takes a very high amount of capital investment. And in an airport environment, once you've put in that capital investment, you need time to amortize the cost of those capital investments. So the HMS Host contract, as an example, expires in 2030. The parities contract expires in 2028. So these can be 20 to 30 year contracts. And by allowing opportunities for smaller operators to come in and grow their business, they give them opportunities that don't just come up once every 20 to 30 years. Now to your second question, could it be done differently? The answer is yes, it could be. So as the contract comes up for renegotiate, well, not for renegotiation, for a new competitive process, for a new RFP, certainly it's something that the airport can and will evaluate on whether or not we want to continue with the prime and sub concessionaire relationship. But that would be done per the, per the expiration of the contract as we move into a competitive process. And we would also want to weigh the pros and cons of changing course on that. Would it actually benefit the DBE providers? Because our goal is to create opportunities for these relatively smaller ACDBE and local providers.
Okay, thank you. And as far as this relief, if, if host, so HMS Host is saying that they cannot or will not be able to provide the health insurance to their employees. And, and because they have the prime relationship with the city, then we don't have the ability to provide and to protect the sub, the sub vendors or the smaller businesses. So it's, if HMS Host does not accept this relief, then as council member Newton said, the subcontractors are essentially, well, they're held hostage or in line with this contract. Is there, and I know that according to, first Newton, a proposal, I, I think that HMS Host would have to approve for us to give assistance to the sub vendors? Is that, if, if they decide not to accept the assistance, are they willing to do that? Are they, are they willing to allow us to assist the sub vendors if they decide that this is not a condition that they can meet?
Ms. Johnson, are you directing that to Mr. Cagle, to HMS Host? To HMS Host? All right, Mr. Cagle, does Mr. Fox, is he to represent them tonight?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Fox, if you've heard Ms. Johnson's question, or Ms. Johnson can repeat it.
Are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yes. Ms. Johnson, though?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I've heard Ms. Johnson's questions. I've also heard Mr. Newton's presentation. Let me start by saying HMS Host cares about its employees. It cares to the tune of the pandemic started in March of this year is an unfortunate circumstance that has riddled the country as well as this company. It has provided healthcare benefits for its employees, 27,000 nationally during the period of pandemic, of the pandemic. We are talking about 1,300 effective employees at the Charlotte Airport. 426 of those employees opted for healthcare benefits. Those 426 received benefits for the two and a half months. With regards to the request that has been presented by Mr. Newton, which I've just seen for the first time, that request is asking HMS Host to extend those benefits for an additional four months. The 1.8 million that Mr. Newton referenced was taken out of context. There was never an agreement of HMS Host to agree and commit to pay the four month extended period of healthcare benefits. What it was was a statement of what the extension of those benefits would cost, the cost being $450,000 a month, times four, it comes up with approximately 1.8 million. With regards to, with regards to the two proposals that Mr. Newton has presented, I applaud Mr. Newton on his efforts to try to get a win-win out of this, but HMS Host, as I mentioned, cannot agree to the, the, the conditioning of relief upon the, upon the extension of healthcare benefits, nor can it agree or commit to. The second approach would be the deferral of rent payments on the ACDBEs. What you're dealing with is an attempt by Mr. Newton and his proposal to rewrite two contracts, one of which is a collective bargaining agreement, which is prohibited by 95, Nofeline Jones Statute 95-98 that prohibits governmental bodies from negotiating with represented individuals of a labor union. And it also is prohibited by the National Labor Relations Act. The second one is to negotiate the concessionaire agreement that exists between HMS Host and, and the city of Charlotte. And we would contend that this was a plan that was put together with your staff. Your staff is revered in the industry. They know how airports work. They have looked at what industry, what the airport industry is experiencing nationally, if not globally, and looking at the instruments that they have, their contractual documents, they have recommended, and the task force agreed that the approach and the recommendation that's before you is the best approach and recommendation to ensure and promote the viability of HMS Host and the concessionaires and the ACDBEs to ensure that as the economy turns, that there will be jobs that these individuals can go back to. that there will be jobs that these individuals can go back to.
Johnson? Thank you. I've also heard from the union and the small businesses at the airport. And the small businesses employ, you know, seven or eight hundred people also. So there are employees on, on both sides of this. And we do care, while we do care about the health insurance and, and would want to protect individuals, we're simply just not able to as a city. Unfortunately, due to this COVID crisis, there might be up to 27 million Americans who've lost their health insurance due to being furloughed. So this is an opportunity for, for HMS to reduce costs, for this subcontractors or sub vendors to reduce costs, because we know that they've lost 90 to 95% of their business due to the COVID crisis. And HMS, and their furlough, they're also hoping to bring those people back. So for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support Councilmember Newton's substitute motion, or the amendments to the, to the relief, because the contract is with HMS Host. I would say to anyone listening, this is a state, the state Medicaid expansion. This is, this is a place where that would be appropriate, or if the federal government could pass an act for healthcare for furloughed employees. So this is an opportunity to put some pressure on the Republicans and at, at the federal level or the state at the federal level to, to make those concessions. But as far as City Council, we have to protect our small businesses, our large businesses. We have to protect the airport, and we simply cannot risk losing those businesses in trying to protect a, a smaller population. So I wish we could do more, but I will be voting to pass the relief. Thanks.
All right, I have Ms. Ashmira. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions to confirm. So this question is for HMS Host. Mr. Fox, as a result of this relief, would sub concessioners be able to get rent relief as well? I hear Mr. Newton said that there is no guarantee, since we don't have a direct contract with them. But is that the plan that HMS Host has, is to pass that relief to sub concessioners?
If you're talking, you're on mute.
Well, I hit that little red button, it just didn't work. Thank you, Dimple, for the, the question. The, the recommendation was to allow for the airport to defer fixed space rental payments, and that would be carried out not just for ACDBE, I mean HMS Host, but its ACDBE subtenants who are viewed somewhat like partners of HMS Host.
So you're saying that they will get rent relief or rent deferral?
I, I do believe that to be the case. We do have Yolanda Johnson, who is an ACDB, available to respond to that.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I have talked with Ms. Johnson earlier. I'm interested in hearing from HMS Host that that's the plan. If you are providing this relief, that relief will be passed on to sub concessioners. That, that's all I'm interested in.
Yeah, without a doubt, without a doubt, it will be passed on to the, the number of ACDBEs who have helped carry forth an effective concessionaire program at your airport.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. Second question I have is to follow up, follow up on what Ms. Johnson alluded to earlier. So this question is from Mr. Kegel. Do we currently, or are there any MWSBE goals for sub concessioners? Do we, in the contract that we have with HMS Host, are there specific requirement around the opportunities that should be given to minority owned or women owned businesses?
That is a, an excellent question. So the ACDBE program is the Federal Airport Concessions Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. So because this is under federal guidelines, the city's CBI program does not apply because it falls under, it's preempted by the federal program. And so as ACDBE providers, all of the sub concessionaires who are also ACDB providers, registered as federal DBE providers, or in this case, airport concession DBE providers, and they fall under that program. And the federal program does not recognize the S. It does not recognize the small business component, but it does recognize disadvantaged groups.
So I understand that it's a federal program, but is there a specific number in terms of the requirement, the 10% or 20% from federal?
I apologize, I did not understand the question, I do now. So similar to the process that Mr. Powers explained, we have a similar process for the federal program, and it is an annual goal that is evaluated every three years. Leave the goal, and I will, you know, I can tell you what, I don't know the exact goal, I think it is 18 to 20%, but it's slightly different whether you're, not you're dealing with food and beverage, retail, rental cars, or advertising, because they're all, they all fall under the, the purview, but I can get you the exact answer if you would like.
Yes, I would be interested in seeing how is that program, how, how is it different than CBI, not in terms of the certification, but the goals? So that's, if you could get back to me on that, that would be great.
Setting and the process for evaluating is very similar in the form of disparity studies. So we normally hire consultants to help us evaluate availability in the market. But I can, I can absolutely get you more information on the entire program and the process by which the goals are set. I will say the goal is set in conjunction with the FAA's Office of Civil Rights, or OCR, and Michelle Torres on my staff works directly with them, and we would be happy to get you more information.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel, I'd appreciate that. So in terms of our business model, is it, is it a normal business practice that airports directly have contracts with only the prime, and then prime will have sub concession, sub concessioners contract?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's, that's just the way industry works?
Again, it, it's, it's not, it's not a rule, that is not an FAA requirement. That is the norm in the industry, and it creates a mutually beneficial relationship for the smaller, usually local, and DBEs designated firms to be able to enter a complex operating environment and grow their business.
I, I understand that it creates mutually beneficial relationship, but I would be interested in seeing, what are things direct, I guess, if we had a direct contract with concessioners, how would that look like today versus what it's currently? I'd be interested in seeing that and how we could potentially look at that and also increase our MWSBE goal. Other question I have, well, so this alternative that is currently being presented here, did public, I, I don't, I don't remember if public had an opportunity to comment on this, did they? I know we did laugh back and forth last Monday, and I don't remember if this was the alternative that was presented as a substitute motion, and if public had an opportunity to comment on it.
Is that question, is that, is that also for me?
Oh, whoever remembers, I, I, because I'm trying to address the public comment question that came up earlier, that I know it is a continuation from last week, but I, I don't remember this. So Mr. Kegel, do you remember this alternative being discussed at the last council meeting, and if public was given an opportunity to respond to it?
So there were public speakers, I believe there were four public speakers signed up last week associated with the loss of benefits. I will also say, this motion came before the task force, at which there were, Mr. Stuart Mora with Unite Here was engaged and communicating with Mr. Driggs, the chairman of the task force.
Right, but that doesn't address my question. My, my question is, did public get an opportunity to comment on this alternative? I mean, I, I don't remember it did, and I think that brings up the concern where what we have in front of us today, this alternative, I understand that there was an original recommendation from the committee and here's the alternative, if public had an opportunity to comment on Also that I had, I had asked Mr. Driggs, the chairman of the task force, about having a diverse set of voices at the table, and I, I don't see any representation from employees, and I, and, and that's truly concerning. With that being said, I agree with Councilmember Johnson that when we talk about healthcare, it is something that we need to address at the state level, at the federal level, especially at the state level with Medicaid expansion. And I just don't see us addressing this at the local level just for 450 employees. We need to do that for all 900,000 charlatans and all North Carolinians. So, and I have had an opportunity to speak with many small business owners, they have requests, they have been waiting for this relief for a while, and many of them, if they do not get this relief, they may not survive. And that's what I'm concerned about. I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Johnson, I had an opportunity to speak with another sub concessionaire over the weekend who operates Red Mango store. And I'm, I, I, we need to go ahead and provide relief as soon as possible. And based on what Mr. Fox said, that yes, if we were to provide the relief to HMS Host, they'll go ahead and pass it on to the subcontractors or sub concession, sub concessioners, I think we should move forward with that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Winston?
I apologize. I beg your pardon? Mr.? That was somebody else. Thank you. I wanted to give a, a shout out to Mr. Newton for really paying attention to this. I think he's really caught on to something that is fair, that both sides give a little, all sides give a little, because we have, we have three, I think we have three different sides here, tenant, tenant landlords, I mean, tenant landlord situation that we have, and workers that are part of third, third parties. With that said, I am very disappointed that there is no representation for workers on this airport committee. This is also something that I saw as a deficit in our housing work. We did not have renters or those folks that are being subject to the instability at home or at work represented in our groups. All we had was businesses whose business models are dependent on, on some of this federal relief. So I think that is a flaw, that continues to be a flaw in our work that we should fix. Let's be honest here, HMS Host is not going to accept this, not because the proposal is not fair, not because they can't afford it, but it is because they are in a national labor negotiation. I would like to also call out the hypocrisy in, in, in this state, this right to work state, that says government entities cannot negotiate in collective bargaining agreements. While I won't necessarily, don't want to get involved in the national negotiation here, let's be, let's be clear that HMS Host will not concede to what Mr. Newton has presented, because if they concede here, they have to concede everywhere. So while, while we can't participate in negotiations, we are subject to the, the negotiations that are happening. And far too often, we are saying, well, we, we will always side with the businesses, and we will, and we, and we, and we ignore the situation of the workers, and we say we are legally not able to address those things. This is the, the behavior that needs to, to change. You know, there are three things that people need here during COVID. They need a place to stay, they need access to food, and then they need, need access to healthcare. I, I think this proposal gets people in a place to get all of those three things. I, I will also say that it is pretty ridiculous that, going back to those collective bargaining agreements, that in this situation in particular, not only does the collective bargaining that is happening on the national level, this allow us from specifically talking to workers who are constituents and who we are responsible for, it also puts a barrier between us and our small businesses, many of those who are locally, so are small businesses, that they are subject to the relationship between those, those, those larger national, international conglomerates, their workers, and our, our relationship. You know, I talked to one of these small business owners and asked them pretty bluntly, let's be honest, if, if, if business models are not able to adapt to the, the environment that, that businesses have to operate in, why should we support those? Shouldn't we let the market choose how, how they went? And then they gave me a very succinct and honestly compelling, compelling answer. That answer was, well, these conditions are created because government shut things down, because necessarily so. And they're right, and they're right, and I do think the, the, the situations that government create, even if, if they're justified, the government needs, has the responsibility to, to remedy. However, in the airport, in the airport business, as, as Mr. Fox referenced, is, is, is a slightly different beast, it's a slightly different beast than everything else. We know that air travel, airline business, but what we are specifically in, the airport business, is going to be changed, even if those, those sanctions on, on stay at home orders are lifted tomorrow. It's just the nature of this business. So in the, in the desire to keep people housed, fed, with access to healthcare, I think the, the bigger conversation, and the conversation that we're not having is, how do we use this relief to leverage the change of the airport business? So I, I have questions for the business owners that are on this call, and I, and I want you to be frank. Um, uh, a- a- as we know that we, we, we believe and we, we should believe, and I, I think we do, I spoke to many of the administrators at the airport, I've spoken to uh representatives of, of the airlines, um, and I've spoke to small business owners in the airport. Airport, if, if anything does return to normal, it is not going to return to normal until three to five years from now. So, so you business owners, I need you to be honest with me right now. If you get this um relief, uh, this rent relief, uh, how long will your small businesses be able to survive? What is uh the viability of your business given the change of um, of, of how uh, uh airports are going to operate? How long are you going to, to survive? Because that's going to be an important part of how do we make our employees that work for you whole um, m- moving forward? Are you go, going to be able to keep your, your, your doors open um through September? Or, or, and, and that's it? Uh, or do you see that you have a fighting chance over this next year to two years to three to five years? So I'd love some feedback from the, the business people that we have on the line.
I don't know. Um, I think I saw Ms. Johnson was on the line and Mr. Kelly, I'm not sure who else um is there.
HMS, HMS Hosts can speak, HMS Hosts can speak too because, you know, again, um, you know, we're just not going to need the same amount of restaurants there anymore. But we might need more space for certain restaurants. So I need, I, we need to speak clearly for workers to understand what is the medium and long-term expectation of what work at the airport looks like.
All right, Mr. Cagle, you're probably the best one to start off because you're responsible for making all of these things happen. And if airport change is what we're talking about, I mean, I think if you could just do that bef, and then we have the worker, the Mr. Fox to represent HMS Hosts. But I think the future of the airport and, and, and also would you address the COVID funding for the airport and the context for it?
Yes, so I, I agree with Mr. Winston, the, the travel experience, it is not going to bet, go back magically to how it was pre-COVID-19. I, I don't think anyone in the industry believes that, um, and it would be silly if that was our assumption. We, we do not believe that. We are working right now to figure out how do we re-instill confidence um in the travel experience? And there will be many changes that come to the airport. Um, and we are looking at that right now, we are working on that, and that will be one of the things that we know uh, over the next year, we will be investing in some of those changes using the stimulus funds. How do we, you know, is there going to be a need to change the layout for hold rooms? What will, how do we move to cashless payments? Um, or a touchless experience overall in the airport? We are doing that right now. We're working with American Airlines, we're working with the concessionaires. Uh, I know Ms. Johnson has expressed her concern. Um, as, as a restaurant owner, I know Ms. Johnson is concerned, what, what does a passenger expectation in a dining room going to look like at the airport? Um, I'm sure Mr. Fox and his client um are thinking the same thing. We are all looking at that. And right now, we know it's going to be different. We know that the recovery is not going to come overnight. Uh, and we're trying to figure out how to best approach this and weather that storm. I don't know if the storm is going to be three years, five years. You know, I don't know how long it's going to take us to get back to where we were, the high point of 50 million passengers. I know that it's not going to be during the next fiscal year. And so our goal is to work with all of the partners to redefine and meet customer expectations and use the stimulus funds where we can to create um an airport that meets the expectations of the passengers. And to work with the concessionaires on that.
There's two people that would like to address the question, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Beer. So, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Winston, I know I had the opportunity to briefly speak with you earlier. Will I weather the storm with, with this relief? As, as Mr. Cagle just said, I mean, that greatly depends on consumer confidence. However, what I do know is, without it, I don't stand a chance. All I'm asking for and all, any of the business owners that are asking for it that emailed you earlier or yesterday, we need a fighting chance to weather this storm. Um, and it, and the relief that's outlined um in the task force recommendation comes to you with a lot of discussion, a lot of um vetting and consideration on the part of the entire task force as well as the two small businesses that were represented. Um, we have, many of us have weathered storms in the past, not a COVID storm, obviously, but have weathered storms in the past, and we've weathered it just for the same reason that we're coming today. We weathered those storms because of the fact that we had a prime concessionaire as well as the aviation department come together and figure out what's best for the overall concessions program. I can only go, I can only base my response to you on past experience, and that's been my experience that as a team effort, we've been able to weather other challenges in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Beer?
Yes, uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, to speak. And uh, to Councilmember Winston's uh comment, uh, we absolutely need the relief and we can't survive without it initially. Uh, I think I sent a few council members emails. Uh, just ta- take for example, April, if I were to pay my April minimum rent, that would equate to 95% of my sales. So, that, that's not sustainable. And I lo, I, the, the most difficult thing that I've done in my life is to lay off 20 of my 24 employees. And I did it individual, there were individual conversations that I had with each employee, and we're looking forward to uh, bringing them back as soon as we can, but we absolutely need the relief in order to continue to operate as the air traffic picks up. Uh, it's going to be important for that relief so we can continue to make investments, uh, continue to purchase uh the food that we need to operate uh, and to continue to move forward as we try to dig ourselves out of this hole that COVID-19 uh has presented itself. Uh, so it's just not sustainable uh to pay base rent when it's more than half of what uh we're currently uh making. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Um, so I have a follow-up question. So I ask again, I, I'm, I'm very, I'm, 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 I'm not very happy that we have, because our prime is in the, in, in the, the business position that they are in, they dictate the ability uh to have a relationship with our small businesses. Um, we also have other pots of COVID dollars. So I asked uh Mr. Cagle uh to talk uh to um, uh, Assistant City Manager Dodson uh, to, 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 to get a better understanding. So what if, as, as we reevaluate what air, airport business looks like, perhaps there isn't as a place for an HMS Host in, in our airport anymore? What if we didn't, they did not accept this rent relief and they decided they wanted to pull out of their, their airport? Uh, out of our airport? Is there something that we can do with our small business federal relief dollars that we have right now to work with our small business community that is already at the airport to find more ways that we can work together to figure out what the future of our airport business looks like? So I would ask Mr. Cagle uh for any updates, uh, and if, if Ms. Dodson is there, um, any ideas, uh, if, if there has been any, anything that has, has come out of that for what we can use those federal dollars that we already have uh to, to work with our small business community uh at the airport? If, if HMS Hosts were not to be there.
Mr. Cagle?
Yes, so I apologize. I know that we had the conversation uh last week. Um, I, so the question that uh Ms. Dodson and I have discussed is, if there are less employees needed, i.e. there are less concessions needed at the airport uh because the recovery is slower than we anticipate, or it's just a different environment, are there things that we can do to connect uh those displaced employees with workforce development opportunities for other businesses that continue to thrive or maybe thriving throughout this uh that are also in proximity, what I'm going to call the West Side or the airport area? Things like logistics firms, a- and the answer to that is absolutely yes, and, and we want to do that. I know that Tracy and I had that conversation, and we want to pursue that conversation. Now, the secondary question, I apologize, I have not talked to her directly, but I am absolutely happy to do that about what would, um, in what way can other stimulus funds that the city's receiving go towards assisting uh local, smaller business owners to operate uh in the airport environment?
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Fox. Um, if H, it, it becomes, it, it's, it's something I'm understanding that, that HMS Hosts would not take this rent relief um, if they're, if, if F and G are part of it. Uh, so does that mean if they don't take that rent relief that they will no longer be able to operate their businesses um at the airport?
I think the way to look at it now is, what's before you is uh a lease and a contractual arrangement between HMS Hosts and the airport.
I have a question. I have a question. That's a yes or no question.
Is my speaker on? Let me just.
Yes, just because I'm.
I hear you. I hear you. I hear you, but it's a yes or no question.
It's not a yes or no answer, uh, with all due respect. It really is talking about, um, you know, the, the company and, um, and the ability to say that they're not going to.
Let me ask the question a little differently. Let me ask the question a little differently. If HMS Hosts does not accept this rent relief, how long will they be able to operate their business at Charlotte Douglas Airport?
How long would you be able to operate a business where you have 5% and 95% of your business is gone?
If HMS Hosts does not get.
Reality that we have at your airport, we have 5% of the traffic as opposed to the other 95%.
That's not an answer to my question. I'm gonna ask it again. How long will HMS Hosts be able to operate at Charlotte Douglas Airport if it does not receive this rent relief or it does not accept this rent relief?
I can't answer that question. I'd have to talk with uh HMS Hosts with regards to the, the ability of time. But I will tell you this, that the agreement that they are under is a, a lease agreement with the city, and there are provisions that they're required to meet that the city will, may start to enforce. So how long they be, how aggressive, that the city may be enforcing lease provisions that may not be being met?
Mr. Fox, I just had two small business owners get on here and tell me that if they don't have this rent relief, they will not be able to continue to run their business. So I think it is completely fair, if they can answer the question, that HMS Hosts should be able to answer the question, how long will they be able to operate their business at Charlotte Douglas International Airport if they do not receive uh, uh, rent relief uh from these stimulus dollars?
I can't, I'm not prepared to give you an answer to that question because I don't have the balance sheet of HMS Hosts before me.
Well, we need that answer. We need that answer. Because that, i- i- if you don't have that answer through this whole process, again, I would ask, then what is the process? What were you working for in this group to say that you need, that you need this, the, these tax dollars to continue the business? If you don't know that answer, what was HMS Hosts positioned through this whole process?
No offense, everyone, but I've got 2,000 people, I have 2,000 people marching through my district right now, and I don't have time for this. So I will bid you all later, and I'm going to be out there with the protesters. Good night.
Mr. McCarty, Mr. Winston, I think Mr. Eggleston has been waiting 50 minutes to um speak. I think that we can go back and forth, but I can clearly.
We have a big decision right now.
We, I know, I was gonna, I was gonna ask if you would mind if Mr. Eggleston, who has not spoken yet, would come, and then we'll come back to people that have spoken. That's acceptable. Not, we can, you can continue, may continue.
I, I, I would like an answer to my question. When can we expect the answer from HMS Hosts on that question? How long can they, will they be able to run their business at Charlotte Douglas International Airport if they do not receive this? It's, it's, it's the central part of, 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 of this vote right here. If, if, if you can't answer that question, then why are you even here advocating for it?
Okay, um, I, I think Mr. Fox has said that he can't answer that question, but I think your point is made as essential. Um, Mr. Eggleston?
I'm used to waiting an hour to speak in these meetings. It's okay.
No, I'm, I, it's, it's a long day. I, okay.
Um, we're all very passionate, and, and I don't mean to make light of the conversation. It is a serious issue, uh, and I think that to a person on this council, everybody believes that folks deserve healthcare, um, especially in a time such as this. And, and more me, needs to be done towards that end. I do have two questions for the city attorney. Um, and we've talked about this a little bit, but I would like a little bit more of a clear legal opinion on, on two fronts. One, Mr. Newton made reference, and I, and I see the difference he's highlighting. My question for the city attorney is whether he believes there is a definite legal difference between dollars that we've gotten from the CARES Act that go directly to small businesses in the form of a grant. And in this case, and, and Brent can correct me if I'm wrong in the way I'm looking at this, but rent relief is not us giving dollars directly to the business, which is Mr. Newton's point, and I think a valid one. My question is, if the lost revenue to the airport by virtue of giving that rent relief is essentially, if the airport somewhat made whole by those federal dollars from the CARES Act, does the city attorney see a legal difference in those two circumstances? Or from his vantage point is that 6100, that's my first question.
Mr. Beer?
Yeah, I, I think I understand the, the question, and, and I think the best way to answer it is that the, uh, the report that came out of the committee that, that references um, uh, providing uh HMS Hosts and Parities uh with deferred rental, I believe that that would be consistent with the act uh and that you could, you could do that. So from, from that perspective, um, I, I don't have any legal concerns uh with, with providing the rent relief uh and using the funds to basically, um, basically supplant what we would have been getting from, uh, from the, uh, uh, from, from the entities.
Understanding that part, I, I, and I probably didn't do the best job of asking the question. I, I think Mr. Newton's point was that maybe if, if the dollars were coming fr, from the CARES Act and going directly to the vendors, that they might be subject to certain regulations that might preclude us from doing something like attaching a healthcare provision to it, but that because they are not a direct pass-through, um, but it's in the form of rent relief, that that might somehow legally be different. And that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think there was a, a, a challenge when we're only talking about uh the, the folks that we've got a contract with and, and they're subcontractors. Uh, I don't believe that we have a, we're not in direct privity of con, contract with them, so it would be a challenge to have a direct negotiation with them or providing them with direct relief uh when they are the subcontractors of, uh, of HMS Hosts and, uh, and Parities. So, so I believe that the, the program that's a, has been presented uh that, that came out of the committee, uh, I, I think is the appropriate way to go rather than reaching down directly to the, uh, to the subs since we're not in privity of contract with them.
And then second, final thing was just if you could address uh Mr. Fox's points on, and, and it was to the mayor's point maybe an hour ago. So Mr. Fox might have to quickly restate, but there was a couple of, of items that he had mentioned as it relates to a potential violation of, of us interfering with labor negotiations or something like that. If you, if you recall exactly the provisions or the, uh, the statutes that he was talking about, uh, I would be curious. I would be curious to hear your response to that, and if not, then Fox can repeat them,
I, I think I understood Mr. Fox's points on this, and, and I really can't speak to their labor agreements, I haven't seen them. I would imagine, I, I have no reason to believe that Mr. Fox's interpretation of those labor agreements isn't correct, in the sense that they would have to provide this relief to, to all of their other outpost, and it's not just a Charlotte issue. My, and I'll sort of reiterate what I said last week. As it relates to seven other recommendations, A through E, I don't have a problem with any of those, those recommendations. Those are the types of things that in a, take COVID-19 out of the equation, these are the types of things that we would be able to negotiate with, with HMS in terms of, you know, the, the operating hours, and, and the, the financial statements, and adjusting revenue guarantees, et cetera, et cetera. That would be the, the, the normal course of, of our contract negotiations with them. The, the issue, the, the concern that I have as it relates to the, the insurance piece is that that wouldn't be a topic for, for normal contract negotiation. Now, this isn't exactly a normal contract negotiation, as Mr. Newton has, has said eloquently, this is simply, would you like to have this particular relief, and if so, this is the condition on the relief. So it's not, it's not the classic negotiation that you would see. But, but my, my concern, and, and I can't tell you that there's a prohibition against doing this, nor can I show you that we have a clear authority that we can do this, but, but it's, it's, it's an area that we don't typically deal with and negotiate, and, and that's the concern that I have, is that I don't know that you're going to have the authority to do that. You could talk about some of the, the particular legal issues, the bigger issue that, that I would have potentially is, is the, is the attention that could be drawn to, to this requirement here, and whether or not that would, you know, expose us to, you know, a change in the law, or the federal government coming and saying, we never told you, you could condition this relief on, on, on insurance provided by, by the employers. I just don't know what would happen. I think Mr. Newton has, has raised some points that I think would, would, would be on the side of you can do this, but there may be, you know, just, just pointing to the fact that there's, there's nothing in the act, and there's very little guidance in the act. We're constantly looking at the, the, the fact sheet that, that they, that they have provided to us for, for guidance as, as we're trying to figure out what we can and can't do. And that's sort of the basis of my legal opinion, that A through E are perfectly fine, no issues whatsoever. Hard to say about this, this insurance requirement, and taking aside whether or not HMS Hosts would agree to it anyway, it's just, it's just hard to say. I think there, there are some arguments that you could do it, simply because it's completely voluntary, and they can accept it, they cannot accept that we're not making it a condition of their, 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 their contract with the, the city or anything like that, it's just voluntary. But, but it is in an area that, that we are prohibited from negotiating in a normal negotiating situation, and that's, that's where my, my concern is with it. But as I've said, if that's the direction the council was going to go, I, I would, I would defend it, but, but it, it does give me pause for concern as, as, as the lawyer advising you all on risk.
Okay, I wanted to ask if there were any other council members speaking. I, I think we have two other people signed up, Mr. Driggs and Mr. Newton, and I know that both of them have spoken. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we do this? And I, I think that we're at the point that now most people are ready to make up their minds. We have a substitute motion on the floor to add Mr. Newton's, I believe it was titled, it's, it's listed as F and G. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Newton, and followed by Mr. Driggs, and then unless someone else is ready, then we will be ready to vote.
I do have some follow-up questions, Madam Mayor, and then a statement before kicking it over to, to Mr. Driggs, I'm assuming to call the question. So my first questions are for our city attorney. I, I, I know you've said that, that nothing prevents us from doing this, so my first question is, why couldn't we have the authority to do this if nothing prevents us from doing this?
Yeah, again, this is not the type of, of contract issue that you would normally be able to negotiate in a, in a bid, big contract. And, and as I've, I've mentioned, your point about the fact that this is completely voluntary, it's, it's not a condition of, of a bid, and you're not cramming it down anyone's throat, you know, may play in, in, in favor of, of being able to at least offer this. They can say yes, they can say no, and then you can move on. That would be the argument for it. You know, there, there are potential arguments against it, namely, we don't have the, the precise authority, or, or, or clear authority that we can make that condition a, a part of, of the offer, and, and there may be others that come from HMS Hosts.
But you bring up the, the idea of a bid contract, I, I think you're probably referring to a statute that you sent over to me that says, whenever there's a condition of bidding on a contract, this is a condition of bidding on the contract, right?
Yes, and I've tried to make that clear, that that's not, that's not what this is.
So that would be a prohibition, because this isn't a condition of bidding, bid contracts out the window, that particular term, it is kind of irrelevant in this circumstance. And I think what Councilmember Eggleston was getting at was whether or not this is considered, if, if, if this, this action would be, would be subject to CARES Act guidelines, you know, this isn't something where CARES Act dollars are being appropriated, this is a renegotiation of the existing contract allowing a, a company to keep money it would otherwise be spending. Is that regulated by the CARES Act?
No, this is, this is a separate provision.
Okay, and, and so that answers my questions there. I wanted to, to just mention that there is no, so just for clarification purposes, the collective bargaining agreement, and I have it right here, is between, I don't know if you can see that, but it's specifically an agreement that applies to employees here at Charlotte Douglas International Airport. And I wanted to ask Mr. Fox, is there currently a national negotiation going on for, you know, for employees and collective bargaining right now?
The contract that you showed to the members of council, can you hear me, everyone? That contract was a negoti, a result of a negotiation between HMS Hosts and the bargaining unit. That contract was entered into just of May of this year. The terms of that contract dealt with compensation and benefits. I still point you to North Carolina Jones Statute 95, that's 98, which specifically says that it's a, it's a matter of public policy of this state, that contracts between units of government and labor are against public policy. How do you get there? You get there by insisting upon, imposing upon HMS Hosts conditioned to deal with unionized employees with regards to an element of their healthcare benefits, and you mandate that those benefits be extended for a period of time, notwithstanding the existing recent collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated between the parties of May of this year.
So, so thank you for that, because I think what I heard was, was that there is no national negotiation. The only contract that's really binding right now is this one, which is the one here in the city of Charlotte, and at the same time, you know, inasmuch as any collective bargaining statutes are concerned, you know, we're, we're in a, a, a process of operating and working with HMS Hosts, not the, the, the unions, and so I think, you know, there is a point to be made here that that is not applicable in this case, that particular statute. I wanted to, to, to just, before, once again, kicking it over to Ed, I, I just wanted to give, you know, my personal feelings on this here, where I'm at, I think most of you know how I'm going to vote, right? But, but it's, it's, it's really difficult for me to believe that our interactions with this company are, are working with a, a, a partner that's operating above board, right? I mean, we don't have HMS Hosts actually here. They cannot, so, so I really give Mr. Fox a lot of credit, he's doing a fantastic job on their behalf, but he can't answer all the questions, and I think that that's been exhibited thus far, and it would be great, right, if they were here, but instead, in, in all the conversations I've tried to have with HMS Hosts folks, it's always, you know, operating through a, an intermediary party, an attorney. I wanted to mention that we're talking about a multinational company here with revenues of over a billion dollars per year, owned by two billionaires, and we're being told here that somehow five to seven millions, upwards of $7 million of relief is necessary for them to, to just squeak by, but at the same time, we're being told that they just won't take it if, if something that amounts to a fraction, a fraction of that has to be spent to take, or the, the health insurance of their employees. And at the same time, so what I've also heard here is, not just will they deny, right, the benefit that they would receive, but at the same time, they would hold it against their sub concessionaires. They would say that if, if you don't give us everything that, that we're asking for, practically unilaterally, right, asking for here, we're also going to make sure that, that any benefit does not extend to concessionaires. The amendment, so sub concessionaires, the amendment that I have proposed here accomplishes all goals. It ensures that, that the HMS Host gets relief to survive. At the same time, it, it ensures that the healthcare of the employees of HMS Host is covered, and also it ensures that rent relief extends to the sub concessionaires, right? No questions asked. It specifically earmarks it in, in this, in this relationship to be extended, and not just placed in the pocket of HMS Host. So having said that, I would ask everybody to, to please consider adopting the, the amended language. Don't allow us as a council to be strong-armed or held hostage like I believe the employees of HMS Hosts, as well as sub concessionaires, are, are being held right now. So that's, you know, that's my two cents. I'll kick it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Well, actually, it was your motion, it was your substitute motion, so I feel like if Mr. Driggs is okay, we can go ahead and vote on the motion. Ms. Johnson, I know, but everybody has spoken, we've discussed this about an hour, so, Mr., if, I just want to check in, are you okay, Ms. Johnson? I can't hear you. Unnu?
Thank you. We sent some aid information. I'd like to add to Councilmember Newton. The last thing you said is that your motion addresses all sides, and that if we have the, the final letter and the, the, and the proposal, then we could assist the subcontractors whether or not HMS accepts it. And I don't think that that's, I, I, I think that we would have to have their permission, and, because we can't, I think it would have to still go through them, and they would have to funnel that down to the subcontractors. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, so they still need to be.
So the answer was yes, right?
Yeah, they still need to.
So we have.
Partner, but it could be specifically earmarked for the sub concessionaires, where right now, you know, the, the A through E just gives the money, or, or allows HMS Hosts to hold on to the money without a specific earmark to ensure that it does go to sub concessionaires.
All right, we've had a substitute motion to, that's, is, I'm sorry, a substitute motion, as a condition of receiving the rent relief mentioned in the previous items, prime concession contract holders shall retain their Charlotte Douglas employees who are furloughed or reduced to part-time as a result of COVID, and extend healthcare coverage contributions to those until their original employment is restored, notwithstanding all previous items allow HMS Hosts to defer fixed rent payments for sub concessionaire partners from July 1 to December 30. All right, we've had a debate, so if, I'm going to do a roll call vote on the substitute motion.
I have a question, this is simple.
I can't see, I don't see you. Ms. Ashmira, I can't see you.
Can you see me?
No.
Okay, hold on. Okay, have one now.
I can now. Ah, new style.
I have a question for Councilmember Newton. So HMS Hosts have clearly stated that they are not, if we put that condition of healthcare, they, they're, they're not interested. So I guess I'm, I'm not.
Also interested in giving their sub concessionaires, not giving the sub concessionaires a, that we would offer, yeah.
So, okay, so what you're saying is that they are not interested in the relief, but they would still have to give it to sub concessionaires?
What I'm saying is that what we're being asked for is an all-or-nothing proposition with no concession in between. The amendments, or the amendment I'm being, I'm proposing in F and G is one whereby we can ensure that not just healthcare being, well, I, I guess, give employees a shot for healthcare, but at the same time, ensure that the money can also given regardless of what happens with, with HMS Host's decision on whether it's not going to take the money it says it needs, but, but also keep a provision in place whereby we can offer money for sub concessionaires regardless.
All right.
That's, that's what the last motion does.
Okay, so we have a motion, so your motion provides relief to sub concessionaires regardless of whether HMS Host takes the relief or not?
That's, yes, ma'am, that's what the last.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. I think that there would be some question about how that, I think the city attorney addressed that, that, that might be, all right, so Mr. Baker addressed this, I think, and I don't think that there's a yes or no answer to it, so we just go ahead and continue. All right, we have a substitute motion by roll call. Mr. Winston? Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
I, I don't think that we can risk.
Yes, it's just yes or no?
So no, so no.
All right. Mr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Eggleston?
No.
Mr. Driggs?
No.
Because Mr. McCarty left without being excused, his vote is recorded as a yes. Ms. Ashmira? Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Isold?
No.
That motion fails. So now all in favor of the motion presented from, as a recommendation from the committee, another roll call vote is to go forward, so Ms. Isold?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty, recorded as yes. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
No.
All right. Thank you all, I, I know this is difficult to have these kinds of debates, and, and really appreciate everyone's calmness and participation in it, and thank you for all the hard work that was done as a result. So now we go back to, we have the motion to adopt the airport recovery. We did not have a closed session. I do not know, Mr. Jones, do you have any information that you want to give us as an update on the protests, or any other updates?
Yes, the last message that the council asked, that it's peaceful, and that's where we are right now.
All right, with that in, that ends our strategy meeting, we have our meeting, our next meeting is June the 8th, and on that we'll have budget adoption. The managers prepared the budget in accordance to the straw vote efforts, and you have that. And Mr. Jones, anything else on that, that agenda that you would like to note?
For the 8th, Mayor?
Yes.
No, that's the, the major item that we have on the agenda for the 8th, and we will talk more about ramping backups. will talk more about ramping backup services or how we.
I was wondering if we could add back to some of the topics that we had before, that, you know, we had the agenda for this one.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right. So Ms. Ashmira? Our, I need, I'm sorry, I need six votes. All right, Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston? Mr. Eggleston?
Yep, yes, yes.
Graham?
Yes.
We need one more. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Y'all have a good evening out. I'm sure we'll be talking this week more often. Enjoy your evening. Bye.